So I just want to start, we are out of executive session. We just wanted to start back, I want to start by apologizing for keeping you waiting. We are trying to take, to keep to our schedule. We just had a lot to talk about and we're going to move along as the best we can through the agenda. Something from if you had not had a chance to tune in or were not able to attend our last workshop, our, the school committee is very committed to efficiency and timeliness. And so we're really off to a great start. So and as part of that, we're also trying to be very respectful of our staff time and each other's time as well. And so we had decided at the last school committee meeting that we would have a hard stop at 9:30 today. And so we are going to try very hard to have that as well. So we appreciate your attending today and we're going to be trying very hard to keep everyone on, on schedule the best we can. So let's get it started with the upcoming meetings. We have the calendar here. Two meetings that I wanted to point out in particular because I imagine in being able to see the stickers that are present, that there are people who would be especially interested in this. We will be having another capital subcommittee meeting on October 2nd. We are also working with the select board to try to schedule a joint hearing on the capital improvement projects and what our recommendation would be moving forward for Driscoll, Pierce, Newberry, potentially other opportunities as they might exist. And that hearing will be taking place on October 7th or October 10th. We're just waiting to hear from the last few members of the board so we can figure out which date has the most availability to attend. So that's where we're at for there. That will bring us to the, we will not be having a vote tonight. At this time, we may resume if we have time. At the end of the meeting, our conversation on the contract for the interim superintendent. We have a consent agenda and I've been told that the MBTA items are not ready for right now.
That's not on the consent.
Oh, it's not on, you already took it off? Thank you. Robin is so good. So we have a consent agenda. Is there any, are there any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? I'm going to make a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, or I'll accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone, Helen will move it and David, are you seconding it? Yes?
So I noticed that we have several change orders. I'm just wondering if you could give maybe an estimate and the aggregate of how much the change orders come to in general, not just the ones that are itemized here, but more broadly, because we seem to be having this come up frequently.
So the Coolidge Corner HVAC contract, those two contracts there, that was one that was put out at the end of last year because the classrooms were cold over the garage. And it was one bidder, it came in, I think about 200,000 more than this present bid. It's something we have to do. There's money in the project budget for it. And we have to do it now so that before the heating season begins and the kids and the teachers are freezing in the classroom. So that's that one. Is that the one you're referring to?
No, just more broadly. There have been a lot of change orders, not just today, but in past school committee sessions. I'm just wondering if we have some idea of what that total looks like at this point.
So each project does its own budgeting. And for instance, the high school amendments are things that we knew some of them were going to happen. The one we didn't know on here, I think, was the one for, the four million and seven million, the big ones are the pre-ordering of things. Some of them have come in higher than what we expected because the things around, the building trades around Boston are coming in higher in general. So that's, that's that piece. They are responsible for keeping within the budget and Ms. Ditko, as our representative, makes sure that that happens. Things may have been and will continue to be value engineered. I don't think I'm answering your question though. So maybe help me a little more.
No, because just I see that it's roughly 11 million that's being added today and then we've had past.
It's not in addition, some of it is not in additional. Some of it was already budgeted within the budget. We are pre-ordering things. We are doing, and help me, I don't know about these two ones, but we, we have a CMT risk who gave us a price. And in order to help.
So is the question?
Okay, so the answer is that on the highs, each project is on its own. On the high school project where the big numbers are, some of it is already in the budget and some of it is over as a, as a, as a result of bidding. However, there is still a commitment to stay within the 205.6 million dollar envelope. So these are not, doesn't mean that the project is getting 11 million dollars more expensive. So it's more about shifting things around within the project. So happy to give you more detail on it, but we're not increasing the cost of the project by 11 million dollars.
So for instance, the 36,000 for Ron, the T is making us do some things that we weren't planning on doing. And so those sorts of things are also, there's a contingency there, I'm sure, that we weren't expecting. But in order for us to move forward with it, we need to approve it. Is that?
Okay. Sorry, back to the Coolidge, and I don't want to belabor this, but this wasn't part of the original build?
So what happened, in any building, you find out as, as the building becomes used, the things that you need. There are things that we had to put in, other things that have been put into the building. This particular item, they realized in the winter that it was freezing and they had to figure out what was wrong, how to remediate it. When they did that, they put it out to bid, that was probably sometime in April. Once more, there was one bidder, they felt that it was too high, the building commission felt that. So all of these things in addition, Mr. Pearlman, the building commission goes over all of these costs and really with a fine tooth comb. If you ever go to a building commission meeting, you'll see that they get these change orders, they ask about them. I'm often there and listen to, to some of those, you know, what it is they're questioning on them. So they are very careful about how they spend the town's money. And, and this is something we have to have. It's not a, would we like it? You don't want to have cold feet in school.
So it was something when we designed the bill?
It was part of the design issue, that it wasn't designed, that part should have been better insulated and better heated.
Okay. Do you have a question, everybody?
I have a question. Just remind me the, if someone could give a quick explanation of the full scope of the easement agreement with MBTA. I know, I know there's been some talk about it previously, I just would like a reminder.
It's not on the consent agenda, it has now.
Oh, it has been moved off. Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, because they had, and I actually had asked that you get a copy of it ahead of time to take a look at it for us. Because I think you've had some experience with MBTA and.
Yeah, and I don't know if it was sent to me or not.
It hasn't been, because it's not ready.
So when it is ready, Helen has asked that it go to you so that you can take a look at that ahead of time, but it's not ready and we're not, it's not on the consent agenda tonight.
Great, thank you.
We're not voting. C is not there, yeah.
It's not there, okay. Agreed. Okay. So, all right, seeing no further discussion, all of those in favor? Oh, sorry, that's unanimous? All right, so that, yes?
Could I just make a request, a new norm? And that is, I've had many people ask that when we speak, we actually do like Mr. Pearlman does, which is to bring the, bring the microphone up to our, up to our faces. People in the audience and people at home in particular having trouble hearing, hearing us. So it'll take a while for us to remember to do it, but anyway, thank you.
That brings us to the introduction of our new staff. So Mr. Lummis. I would, I can, I would like to start by welcoming Mr. Lummis. We have had a wonderful start of the year and although we are not voting on the interim contract at this moment because of time, we are really, we're very glad that you're here. We're very thankful for all of the hard work that you've done since you assumed this role and we really look forward to this year. So thanks for, for launching off the rest of the new staff, but we'll, we'll start by introducing and welcoming you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure so far working with everyone. People have been great. We've got a fantastic school opening, which I'll talk more about during my superintendent report. Folks have just been tremendous in welcoming me and supporting me and for some good, for some good reason, sharing their confidence in me as well. But it's been, it's been great, so thank you very much. So I do want to, that is, so far we're not starting off well because I've got the wrong paper. I'll be introducing our new administrators. I just want to start off by saying, last year at this time, this night, we had 17 names, 17 folks introduced, introduced you to. Tonight's just nine. And three of those are folks who are returning, but just in new roles. So I'll just have, have folks stand up as I introduce them. So first, we're going to do this alphabetically. John Andrews. Welcome, John. John is the cord, our new coordinator of grade nine to 12 English, sometimes also known as a department head. Clapping is good.
[applause]
John, I want to say a few things about you so you can keep standing or not, it's up to you. It's up to you. Before becoming coordinator of the high school English department, John served as a teacher in the department for 18 years. As a master teacher, experienced mentor and strong team leader, facilitator, John has undertaken many leadership roles over the years. He started and ran the BHS Writing Center from 2011, 2015. He has served as a mentor to second and third year teachers since 2015. He was a teacher leader for the Tripod Project and he received the Brookline Education Foundation's BEF Cavalier Award in 2013. This is one of the things I'm most impressed by. In addition to his teaching responsibilities, John is a writing coach for BEF's Margaret Metzger Fellowship, through which teachers from across the district reflect and write about their lives in the classroom. If you've ever seen those, those talks and those presentations, you know they're fabulously well done and obviously John has, has a large role in that. Before coming to Brookline, John was a teacher and department chair at the Bell Multicultural High School in Washington DC. He earned his undergraduate degree at Williams College and is a Master of Art in Teaching at English, in English from Brown. So welcome, John, thank you.
Now, Ben, in your, in your former role, you often were the person who then shook hands and took a picture of every new person? Is that going to happen?
We will do that, we can do, we can do that now.
All right.
I won't take, we'll take a picture of the whole group at the end.
Of the whole group at the end, but.
So Erin Burke. Welcome, Erin. Erin is one of our vice principals at Coolidge Corner School. She comes to Brookline after serving for 16 years at the Wilmington Public Schools in Massachusetts, including five years as an assistant principal, three years as director of the district's early childhood center, and several years as a grade five classroom teacher and as a special education teacher in the district's early childhood center. As assistant principal, she oversaw three district developed substantially separate special education programs for students with autism spectrum disorders, social emotional disabilities, and language-based learning disabilities. She also worked closely with the school's positive behavioral intervention and supports team. Erin earned her undergraduate degree at Stonehill College, her master's in special education from Leslie University, and completed the principal assistant principal certificate program through Endicott College. Welcome, welcome, Erin. So Maricel Figueroa Marrero?
I'm Maricel. Maricel is our new associate dean at Brookline High School. Maricel most recently worked at the Dearborn STEM Academy in Georgetown as the coordinator of student support for students in grades six through 12. As part of this work, she led restorative circles to address interpersonal conflict among students and build relationships between peers. Prior to working at the Dearborn Academy, Maricel was the director of guidance counseling at another course to college, a rigorous college prep high school, where she helped to create and implement a whole school crisis intervention protocol in addition to providing direct social, personal, and academic support to students. Maricel has also, also has experience as a mental health clinician and a family clinician. She earned her bachelor's degree from Boston University, a master's of science and mental health counseling, and a master of science in criminal justice from Suffolk University, and a CAGS and social counseling, and school counseling, sorry, through the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Welcome, Maricel.
So Torrance Lewis, our new principal of Baker School.
Erin.
It's only not that many folks this year, good thing. Torrance brings 19 years of experience in elementary education, middle, middle level instruction, curriculum instruction, and educational leadership to his role as principal of the Baker School. Most recently, Torrance was head of the upper school and assistant principal at the Chenery Middle School in Belmont, leading over 700 students. At Chenery, he implemented child study process, helped to develop a curriculum accommodation plan for the school, and coordinated a school-wide cultural proficiency initiative. He also served as assistant principal of the Cyrus Pierce Middle School in Antucket and was the elementary child study chair at the International School of Curitaba, Curitiba, thank you, in Brazil, and was a teacher and coordinator of a learning center program at the Jonas Clark Middle School in Leckington, an academic intervention program for at-risk, at-risk general education students. Torrance earned his undergraduate degree at Georgia Tech, his master's of arts in teaching from Emory University, and a master's in organizational management and curriculum and instruction from Endicott College. Welcome, Torrance. Making a couple jumps here again. So Emily Speck. Welcome, Emily. Emily is our new coordinator of K-8 Science. She replaced nobody, because it was, it was absent for a year after we set so long to Janet McNeil. Emily Speck comes from across the river, from the Cambridge Public Schools, where she served as the director, the district's science instructional coach, designing district-wide science curriculum, using understanding by design principles and implementing professional development to support the rollout of the new curriculum. Before her work in Cambridge, Emily was a science specialist at the Manning School in Boston, developing lessons and accommodations for inclusion science classes. She also worked at the Codman Academy Charter School, serving as chemistry and biology teacher and is a department and grade team chair, was so helpful for formulating strategies to provide the highest quality science education across all grades. Emily earned her undergraduate degree at Williams College and her master's of arts in teaching at Tufts University. She is presently enrolled in the principal and supervisor licensure program at Curry College. Welcome, Emily. So just three more folks who actually aren't here tonight because you know them well, but I'll still explain who they are. First, Gabe McCormick, who was our director of professional development, is now our coordinator of the K-8 Social Studies. I'll say a few things about Gabe, even though he's not here. Gabe served for five years as a director of professional development with a focus on high-quality professional learning. Gabe oversaw the district's orientation mentoring induction programs for early career teachers and administrators, and spearheaded the district's all-staff professional learning days focused on equity and anti-racism. Before Brookline, Gabe was a high school teacher, instructional mentor, and developed these school districts in Washington State. Then Gabe earned his undergraduate degree at Auburn College and his master's at the University of Washington. So welcome to Gabe, we're welcome, or continued welcome to Gabe. I said in my open address to schools that on occasion I'd make mistakes, so I've made a mistake by passing over Erin Herney tonight. I also said I hope I wouldn't make any doozies, so this isn't quite a doozy, but it's significant. So I'd like to also welcome Erin Herney, the early childhood program coordinator.
Thank you, Julie. Erin began working for Brookline in 2016, first as a home visitor to the, in the parent-child home program, and subsequently as a, as the coordinator for the same program and the facilitator of community family engagement. She has 15 years of experience working with families and students in early childhood programs and special education settings. Throughout all of her work, Erin, where the needs of families have been at the forefront. In her new role as early childhood coordinator, she will continue to tackle some of our most important district goals, such as equal opportunity for all families, best practices in early childhood instruction, and creating a positive school culture and climate. Erin earned her undergraduate degree at the University of Massachusetts, Boston, her master's in education at Boston College, and also a certificate in advancement of education studies from BC as well.
Welcome, Erin. All right, on to those folks who really aren't here. And then Janet Utaro. Janet, this year moved from being dean of faculty to dean of the old Lincoln School, working with the ninth graders. Janet's been at Brookline High School since 2007, studying as an English teacher. She served as the program director for the content reading initiative at BHS, overseeing teacher teams and investigating, implementing disciplinary reading strategy, strategies. Janet still supports, the program administrator of the literacy project at BHS, a literacy recovery curriculum for students of color, second language learners, and students from low-income homes. In June 2016, Janet became the dean of faculty at BHS. In this role, she served as a point of, as the point of alignment for professional learning activities, including those on race and equity, and supported the head of school and school vision and improvement planning. In her new role as the dean of old Lincoln School, Janet will lead Brookline High School's ninth grade program and location. She will serve as the dean for many ninth graders and will team with our associate deans and student support personnel to monitor and support students academically and socially and emotionally. Janet earned both her bachelor of arts and master's in education in literacy at BC, at Boston College, and her master's of education in educational leadership at Endicott College. So welcome, Janet. And last, only because her name begins with a W, is Regina Watts, who is our interim principal of early education in her B program. Regina joined the public schools at Brookline in 1989. Some of us were not born yet. And she is a fantastic leader and colleague. For the past 30 years, she has served as a school psychologist, educational team facilitator, and since 2014, as our B program coordinator. She's already begun a seamless transition to her new role as principal of early education. Regina approaches all of her work through the lens of child development, weighing multiple, multiple perspectives in her steadfast commitment to supporting families and children as they navigate through our early childhood programs. She's been a leader, working hand in hand with our exceptional team of early childhood educators to continue strengthening Brookline's trailblazing early education program. Regina earned her undergraduate degree at Iona College and her master's and PhD at the University of Pennsylvania. Please welcome Regina. So just one thing I'd like to say in closing is, what I'm really struck by, especially the folks who are new to Brookline, are just how well their experience speaks to the priorities and work we've been doing here. So whether it's cultural proficiency or special education work, our reading content initiatives, it just, restorative practices, restorative circles, they're just such, such great alignment. And that goes to speak to our great hiring processes, the leadership of our hiring managers, and also the ability for Brookline to pull in a lot of fantastic candidates and then for us to identify the best ones. So welcome all of you. I will go into my old Ben role and we'll take a picture.
I got it.
I think you have to do two rows.
Welcome, everyone. That will bring us to the public comment section of the meeting. And something else, like I guess we have the, the year we're starting off with a lot of new, not new norms, but just holding to some of the norms and trying to implement some of the norms. And so for, if I'm going to take a look, how many speakers, Ms. Quine, how many speakers does it look like we have? Quite a number of speakers, which is great. We're glad to have you. But we will be limiting public comment to three minutes per person. And we're going to try, starting at this meeting, and depending on how it goes, we're going to try to keep track of the time and give you a heads up when you're at two and a half minutes. And there will be a timer that goes off at three, so that you know when we have a chance for everyone to speak. So we'll, we'll get us started with David Lesquere. Oh, and while David's going up to the podium, is anyone recording today? If anyone's recording, they could just identify themselves. All right, Mr. Lesquere.
It's the meeting member. It's not over. It's actually, it's time over. Oh, it has to be green. Red says go. Okay. Good evening, my name is David Lesquere. I'm a town meeting member from precinct 11. I'm here to speak about Driscoll School and going back to the town meeting in May, when we were left with the discouraging news that the override didn't pass. I'll say that I was very active in working for that override and shared the disappointment of many that it didn't pass. But there was a resolution that came before a town meeting and many of our neighbors in the Driscoll community came to add in their concern and desire that the question of Driscoll School override go back, come back on ballot in the fall, November 5th. And in order for that to happen, the select board would need to place it on the ballot with a vote on October 1st. And working back from, from then until today, my recommendation is that the schedule that the chair outlined at the beginning of the meeting would need to be accelerated a bit. Today is September 12th. We would need to have the matter docketed on the meeting for September 19th, maybe with an interim report going to the select board on where things are standing regarding the future of Driscoll and overall plans. I can't say what it would be, what the school committee would come up with, but I feel that the Driscoll community and the town as a whole is entitled to that information at this stage. That would go to the select board on the 24th, presumably they would have it, having received that communication in advance on their agenda, so they could possibly act on it or discuss it. The last date, when they can act on it, they are actually meeting that date, that's a Tuesday, October 1st. So this is my recommendation. I feel that there's a lot of energy coming on this and I want, as a town meeting member, to recommend that. Thank you very much.
Kimberly Loscalzo?
Hello, my name is Kimberly Loscalzo, a Driscoll mom. Been here before. I'm just here to, again, to speak to Driscoll. We all know about the overcrowding. We've all heard it before. I have to admit, I was a little spoiled actually last year in the kindergarten wing. Thought that was overcrowded. It's nothing compared to the first and second grade wing. I have a one-year-old in a stroller and that's no longer an option anymore. We now have to carry because the stroller will not fit down the hallway. But again, we all know about the overcrowding. So regardless of the overcrowding, our building needs attention. It's getting desperate. The HVAC is hanging on by a thread. We had to have a fire alarm panel already installed because it couldn't wait any longer. And the list goes on and on. You've also heard all of that before. So I just encourage you to go to quickly take action on Driscoll. I got two pieces of advice, or no, one piece of advice from two different people this summer, that if you'd like to see Driscoll move forward, show us you have the backing and show us that you have a team. We have a team that is ready to run an override. We just need the green light from you. We are eager, we have momentum on our side. So please, if we could get the decision as soon as possible, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
And Nicole McClellan.
Hi again, school committee. Nicole McClellan, I'm a town meeting member in precinct 11 and a parent of a child who will enter Driscoll next fall. I want to start by saying thank you. I know this has not been a typical summer for the school committee. You all are doing so much work on behalf of the town. I know it's unpaid work and it comes at the sacrifice of probably many. I know it's unpaid work, and it comes at the sacrifice of probably many other things. And I see that, and I want to say I appreciate that. I know it can't be easy. And I'm here tonight to urge a vote tonight to move Driscoll forward. There are parents here with their kids. A lot of parents, I know, are tuning in at home and are very interested in this. And, you know, I was encouraged on Tuesday at the capital planning subcommittee meeting to see a plan come forth that included a four-section Driscoll, a five-section Pierce, and then some to be determined additional capacity, probably a two-section school, Newberry or wherever it might be. I think it's so important that we look at this as always Brookline. We're talking about Driscoll tonight, but I will say for myself, and I can actually speak for a lot of the people that have been working on this, people view this as the first step, not the only step. And it's so important that we look at long-term what we can do in Brookline to address overcrowding everywhere. So I was glad to see the capital planning subcommittee vote on that. I think the most important part, though, is, speaking of team, one of the, a fellow Pierce parent is home with my four-year-old right now, so I could be here tonight. I think that might be her. So I think the important thing is that we get Driscoll going quickly, get it done, get it behind us, capitalize on the momentum. And there are really two important reasons for that. You hear, we talk about the overcrowding, but there's also a really important financial responsibility that we have to the taxpayers of Brookline. And even using conservative estimates, using estimates from JLA, our select board, our school committee in May for the YES campaign, with construction inflation costs at about 8%, every week we delay costs the taxpayers of Brookline $175,000. That's what it means to not act on Driscoll. That's what it means to wait until we have the third piece of the puzzle figured out before moving ahead with Driscoll. And I think we cannot dismiss that. There's very little to be gained by continuing to wait when we know what that other, what this first piece of the puzzle is. Is that my timer already? Oh, my God. Okay. So, I'll wrap up. I think Brookline is like a pressure valve right now. I think the pressure valve affects not just our students and our teachers, but school administration, the school committee, our town administration, and parents. Driscoll lets us open up that pressure valve. Please don't keep the hand on the pressure valve any longer than we need to. I think one of the best things we could do is get some relief immediately. It's wise, it's financially responsible, and it's something that we need to do. So I would encourage you, one last thing, to vote tonight. If a hard stop at 9:30 will hinder a vote, I would encourage somebody to move that this agenda item be moved up, so that a vote can be taken on Driscoll tonight. Thank you.
Jesse Curti. Hi, I'm Jesse Curti. I'm Driscoll's ed tech teacher. Just wanted to give a little bit of perspective about the effects of the limited space that that space is having on our students and on our teachers. It's probably not news to you or anybody in the room, or probably anybody at home. With one relatively small cafeteria and state requirements about when students can eat and how many students can be in that room, we have some really unusual scheduling. There are classes that have lunch at 10 o'clock, and then a three-hour gap, and their recess at 1 o'clock, only to go home 30 minutes later. With a gym that is not large enough to accommodate our students, we have students pretty regularly outside, which isn't the worst thing, but also stuck in what's called the small gym, which is a pretty dank basement space. We don't really have a space for faculty-to-faculty meetings. We used to meet in the theater. Now we're in the library, which used to be the theater. And this really limits the creative decisions that teachers can make. There are classes happening in the hallways. There are classes happening in former closets, which are now offices and classrooms. There is literally no space to go. Teachers can't make a decision, oh, we're going to bring the class to this location, or I'm going to book the theater for this class, because the theater is already booked, because somebody else already needs it. We just don't have any flexibility. There's nowhere for any of us to go. I was so incredibly excited about the work that teachers, students, and community members put into planning a new Driscoll. Really incredibly excited. It's a beautiful building with modern amenities, and I could not wait to get in there and start teaching from that computer lab and from that maker's face. It was such a disappointment that that vote failed. So I don't know a whole lot about the specific procedures and how we get from here to a yes vote, but I ask with the, whatever power you have, to please pass something along that's going to be unencumbered by other projects that might lead this to a no vote. We desperately need a new Driscoll. Please help us make it happen.
Can you hear me all? I'm Scott Nannan, a town meeting member from Precinct 10 and father of Zachary, who's in 1H this year at Driscoll. And Adeline, who's going to be entering kindergarten at Driscoll next year, would have been in BEEP this year, except for the fact that BEEP isn't at Driscoll anymore, due to space issues, right? So I'd like to thank Helen for the process and schedule that brought us to this point at the beginning of the summer. And my role here is just to sort of pass on some information, because I've been talking to people all over town for a while, but especially this week, it seems. I talked to Bernard this morning, in fact. And he was glad to hear the capital subcommittee vote. I think that that statement is a strong positioning for the way forward. But he would like the full school committee to endorse that, so we can move forward together and so that the school board and the select board are on the same page. The select board has already scheduled a hearing this next Tuesday, the 17th of September, on warrant Article 4, which is for the Driscoll renovation. I'm sure they would like to hear the school committee's opinion before that hearing on Tuesday. In fact, I'd love it, I mean, this is me, not them or you speaking, but I'd love it if you guys would have a joint session on that, because I think the school committee and the select board should have an opportunity to talk together before moving forward. So I urge prompt action. We have, the campaign for Driscoll exists. We have money in the bank. We have help and participation from the organizing committee of the 2015 override, from the treasurers of both the YES and NO campaign from this past year's override. We are enthusiastic. We've prepared. We've been working on this all summer. If we have the green light, I am very confident that we can bring this in successfully and start addressing some of the needs in our town.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm representing the Brookline Grapplers Booster Club. So I want to talk a little bit about athletics. Our mission is really to support elementary and high school sports through clinics, mentorship programs, and tournaments. And my specific interest here is that, you know, a booster club in the town really can bring money. And we're talking about, you know, money that, you know, the taxpayers have to put in. So the point is, is we've raised money to support the program. We bought uniforms for the high school team. We've, this coming year, we bought a new mat. So it seems like coming into this school district, athletics is incredibly underfunded. And so, parents stepping up and trying to support our kids. And one of the things that I'm hearing people talk about Driscoll in general is that coming into this town, finding that athletics seem to be very secondary. And I would at least speak to you at some point and say, athletics could be a uniter, okay? So we're trying to build a mentorship program that goes from the middle school, with middle school kids and high school kids. So the point is, is that there's some kind of connection. And I see that athletics in Brookline have been decentralized. What's very interesting to me is there's no home in this town for Brookline athletics. Can any of you tell me where the lacrosse team plays?
Okay.
When is the last time you have been to athletic, high school athletic event? How long ago was that? How long ago was that? A while ago. So I guess the point is, is that I've contacted, my specific thing is, I've contacted the chairman here and other administrators, trying to find some information. What is the athletic budget? And I noted that in the budget, it says that there is a slush fund or revolving fund, and this year there will be an extra money. Now, I think the point is, is this is all a joke, but if you look at the conditions of the athletics here, it's kind of an embarrassment to the community. And I think the point is, is that if we're only going to fund athletics through the fees, all right, what are we telling our kids? And one of the things that it says here, and I'm reading from the document that is in the budget, it says, you know, we want to recognize all of our students for their successes. If you look at Slunch Gym, all right, the banners in there have not been updated since 2004. Now, why is that? If you look at all the other schools, okay, the Tappin Gym, the recreation department, has ownership over that schedule. So varsity athletics in our school district are pushed down. And I'm wondering why this is, okay? So I guess the point that I want, final statement, I would like to know what the budget is. I've contacted you, Julie. I don't know if you got my email, okay? I'm looking for that budget. I'm looking, I talked to Bot earlier about this, and are those funds going to be there? I talked to the athletic director. He constantly says to me, there's no budget. Booster Club is actually gone, and we said, we'll buy it. And we were turned down. No, thank you. Why is this? I think if you put a little bit more emphasis on athletics and winning, I think you might bring in more people for, you know, a new district or a new Driscoll school. So I don't know who I can, who, I guess I want to leave here with some kind of accountability. Is it you, Julie? Who can get me that information?
Public comment, but Mary Ellen Dunn is our deputy superintendent for finance and administration, so she's the best person to reach out to with questions about the budget.
One more question is that Tappin's going to be renovated. Where is there a punch list that I can find? I've been trying to find out what kind of updates are going to be done there, because we're looking at donating stuff to the school. And we don't know. I've been trying to contact the school board and everybody since last year. So Mary Ellen Dunn will be the person that I talk to.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you.
Sorry for the slaughtering of names, but Len Woolley, Woolley?
Good evening, school committee. My name is Len Woolley. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 11. I'm here with Peter. He's at Le Petit. He's got one more year there, then he'll be at Driscoll. I also have a fourth grader at Driscoll. Oh, that'll work, too. And I just urge you to move forward with Driscoll as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
My name is Jane Gilman, Precinct 3. I'm aware, I don't come to many public meetings, so I'm aware that you all sit in this room and other rooms many, many nights. And I'm very grateful for your service. It's more work than I can even imagine, so I thank you for that. I wanted to speak in favor of what David Lescoyer said so brilliantly and several people ahead of me, that I am turning to you to move this item tonight. Candidly, this group needs to restore our confidence in you. I feel that this is your opportunity to make a decisive vote and to move forward on this project, and not to hold Driscoll hostage to future plans involving long-range planning and whatever else is holding it up. As someone made the point a moment ago, the delay is costing us money. So I don't have a kid in the schools. I didn't raise my children in this town, but you have 60% of every dollar I pay the town. So the delay that was mentioned previously is money out of my pocket. And so I urge you to vote on a project that has wide community support, that makes all kinds of educational and rational sense, and to please vote in favor of Driscoll 10 item and dispatch this to the select board as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Dave Gashak, town meeting member, Precinct 13 in Heathdade. Simple message. I agree with what Nicole and Kim and David and Scott and Jane and others have said tonight. Now's the time to act. Time is of the essence. And for that reason, I'm going to sit down, let you guys get to it.
Thank you. My name is Mike Offner. I have three children at Runkell. My girls are in fourth and third. My son just started kindergarten. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 12, but my most proud title by far is that of kindergarten room parent. So I signed up to be a volunteer room parent in Runkell KH, Ashley Hayes. So far, Ms. Hayes has been amazing. I give her a ton of credit for managing the anxiety of not only the children, but also the parents, including me, who are very nervous about starting kindergarten. Ms. Hayes has been wonderful, and she really represents the best of the Brookline public schools. I think the policy committee meeting, the policy committee is meeting on Monday, if I'm right. Can policy committee members raise their hands? I urge you to extend recess for kindergarten. The K-5 recess policy currently is 140 minutes per week. That means typically 30 minutes Monday to Thursday, 20 minutes on Friday. That constraint is a result of the state's annual requirement of structured learning time of 900 hours. Recession doesn't count as structured learning time. So when you work 900 hours into our 180-day school year and adjust for the specific dismissal times in shorter days, it works out that the max that you can give for recess is 140 minutes per week. And I know this because I built a spreadsheet of our entire school year and modeled the whole thing out. 140 minutes is about the most you can fit in, except for kindergarten. The structured learning time requirement for kindergarten is 425 hours per year. I think this probably reflects an assumption that a lot of kindergartens were going to be half-day, but whatever the reason, structured learning time requirement for kindergarten is 425 hours per year. I've gone over the DESE regulations extensively. When you work that assumption into a spreadsheet of the entire year, you could actually give our kindergarteners an additional 13 hours per week of recess. I know that sounds sort of extreme. I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying, that is what the math allows. And I've sent my spreadsheet to the administration school committee before. I'm happy to do that again. But bottom line is, we have a lot of room to play with. I'm not looking for 13 more hours, but 30 minutes a day and 20 on Friday of recess for kindergarten students, it's just not enough. This is common sense to anyone who has been five years old, to anyone who has a five-year-old, and certainly to anyone who's ever taught five-year-olds. So I urge the policy committee to consider a material increase in recess for kindergarten students. Thank you.
That brings us to the end of those who've signed up.
That brings us to the end of those who've signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment this evening? Okay. Alright, that brings us to our student report. And we've also, absolutely, and in reshifting the meetings, we have moved the student report to earlier in the evening with, but we are having a shorter late time. Sometimes we kept our students past 11:00 and midnight, so we're glad to have you and we look forward to your report. You just have to push it so it's green.
Okay, perfect. So Student Council, Student Legislature, is this alright? And Student Judiciary haven't convened yet this year, so this report will mostly feature what it's like living in the new renovated building, and also the new Brookline High School's schedule. So a major first impression living in the building is sort of the poor barriers, signage, and communication about the renovation. On our first day, I was conducting a tour for new freshmen and a couple other new students, and many of my peers frequently went into the construction zone by accident. There was zero communication, the barriers are terrible, doors were unlocked, and there was no communication by the administration to any students about where you can and can't go. And hopefully we'll meet with the administration next few weeks to resolve these issues, because students wandering into a construction zone is incredibly unsafe. The construction zone has also created a few extremely high-traffic areas in the school, specifically the 3rd floor Science Hallway. The 3rd floor features the highest student load of anywhere in the school, and with half of it missing. To get anywhere on that 3rd floor, you need to go through that hallway. The students waiting outside for their class, as well as every student on the 3rd floor having to go through that area, it leads to an incredibly tight hallway and low space. Currently traveling from maybe this end of the room to the other in the hallway might take one to two minutes, which may sound like a lot, but it's a relatively small area. It's incredibly uncomfortable. There's lots of frustration, pushing, shoving, and it's quite dangerous. So perhaps a policy for students wait inside classrooms before class started could be implemented, because that would certainly relieve a lot of stress in that area of the school. Also, a smaller number of classrooms in the school has led to confusion. My original history class was triple-booked. Fortunately, organizational issues have been figured out, but it's still been a bit of a challenge with going to new classrooms every single day. Also, the freshman building, I'm really curious about what it's like traveling from OLS to 115. Unfortunately, I haven't spoken to any of the new freshmen for an extensive period of time about their condition, so I look forward to doing that, reporting it to you. Took condate for the new freshman buildings, the Brookline High School also revamped the schedule. After a lot of initial confusion and complaints, the new schedule has been received positively. With the old schedule, each class met four times a week in 50 to 60-minute blocks. Now each class meets seven times every two weeks, with two schedules that alternate every week, in a schedule and a B schedule, with classes that are 55 to 65 minutes. Fewer classes meet each day, and students absolutely love the new schedule, because the class length change is barely noticeable. The days seem much shorter, and there's much more time for homework and studying. So people love it. And then teachers also really support the change, because it's much easier to finish lessons with the longer blocks, and they have more time to grade papers and tests in between classes. Another major schedule change was the decision to add an additional advisory block every two weeks, and I've heard mixed impressions. So advisory is a 40-minute block in which students meet in small groups with their advisor, a teacher who helps them access the high school resources. So some students believe, and many of the teachers, that the additional advisory time will strengthen the Brookline High Community, but most of the student body agrees that this time could be much better utilized for club meeting time, and is sort of a wasted 40 minutes every two weeks. The new advisory system also dissolved the very popular Junior Mentor Program. Juniors who are accepted in the program will be assigned, in past years, a few freshmen, meet with them on their first day, and help them navigate the school and get acclimated into the BHS community. Many students were disappointed to see the program go. Finally, Student Legislature, Student Council, Judiciary will not convene until early October. Elections will be held during the final week of September. I really look forward to speaking to the new freshman representatives and hearing their opinion about the new system and move between schools midday. Does anybody have any questions about working in the building mid-renovation or the schedule?
So I have a question and a comment, actually. The question is, the Junior Mentors, is that because the freshmen are not in the building that that program has been suspended, or because they're suspending the program forever?
I believe it's because the freshmen aren't in the building. I haven't spoken to any Senior Mentors. I believe the Senior Mentor Program is still going strong, but because of Old Lincoln School and the changes in schedules, the teachers decided to reformat Junior Advisory, so that it's more similar to a Sophomore Advisory, and the freshmen are denied a Mentor Program, which I think will really hurt their transition from freshman to sophomore year.
Yeah, and there are pros and cons, you know, when you're doing a renovation, it's hard to be able to make everything be exactly the same as it was. The one thing I did notice in speaking about recess, I'm sorry, Mr. Offner's gone, that the freshmen are getting a lot of exercise. I actually drove down Davis Avenue while they were changing classes, I guess, I'm not exactly sure when that happens, but there was a long line, just walking, and doing it very well on the sidewalk, which was a good thing. We weren't in the street, but it seemed, that part seems to be working quite well.
It does seem to be working well, and the 20 minutes that are budgeted into the schedule for that are absolutely necessary, because it's quite a long walk.
Yeah, especially when it gets crowded.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Cannon, very helpful, Mr. P. Series. Okay, Mr. Cannon. Thank you very much for your report. A couple thoughts. One is, the comment you made about the fact that there were no barriers and open doors is deeply concerning, so I am the Chair of, one of the co-chairs of the high school project, and that's in fact-
Can I clarify quickly?
Yeah.
So they're all white barrier walls, however, some of the exterior doors, like, I don't know how to explain this, do you know the, okay. So where the beep classroom was, one of my peers actually was able to walk through that door.
Right, so if there are safety issues like that, please don't wait for a Legislature meeting, please email Mr. Mason immediately. I'm sorry? Or go to his office directly, while presumably you have other things to do. But yes, go to his office or email him immediately. There are people on-site who shouldn't be dealing with that instantaneously. It should not be a multi-week process. So that's number one. Number two, in terms of some of the other concerns you mentioned, so I was at a meeting at the OLS earlier this week, there were several hundred parents there, and I didn't hear a number of these concerns bubbling up from the students to their parents. So I think it would be quite helpful if there are things in your report that you're deeply concerned about, it would be helpful to, I'd like to see them, just if you can email them to me, either things, people who aren't being responsive, or issues you're seeing, because that did not come up in several hundred parents speaking with Ms. Meyer, Ms. Utaro, and the two Associate Deans earlier this week. So if there's a disconnect, that's important to hear. So my emails, you just type in Dickoff, and it'll show up, but any of, if you can go back through your report, if there are specific things in there, because again, things like communication, and where drop-offs are, whatever, there were multiple emails that were sent to parents. So to the extent that parents are not communicating that to students, that's important to know. To the extent that there needs to be more communication to students, that's important to know also. So please do sort of elevate those more quickly, rather than less quickly.
I think one of the issues with sort of the student tours going into the construction zone is that, one, the leaders of the tours are pretty embarrassed by their mistake, and also the freshmen conducting the tour don't understand the school well enough to know what went wrong.
Sorry, so freshmen were conducting tours?
No, there were freshmen in the tour, and then Junior Representatives running the tour. Some of the Junior Representatives mentioned accidentally going into the construction zone because of their lack of knowledge on the building. We were given very minimal training, about an hour in an auditorium, which is by no means enough, but this isn't really the time to address that.
No, no, but there shouldn't be any way to accidentally go into a construction zone, I guess, with sort of my-
Right.
And one of the real advantages that we have as a school committee, and one of the reasons it's valuable to have you here and sharing, is because you have a different position with the school community. And so things that you might be hearing about might not be translated from an 11th grader to mom, that's getting back to a meeting, that's getting to Susan.
Or to the headmaster.
Or to the headmaster.
Because there was about 45 minutes of Q&amp;A with the headmaster and three deans, and none of this came up, which is either surprise, there's a disconnect. So if it's not getting to them in the Q&amp;A for parents, which was set up to talk about this, that's important to understand.
And so it's helpful. So, as Susan's saying, if you're having these things that are coming up, like, please utilize that line of communication, because it's really helpful to have your feet on the ground there, so.
I would say the first line of communication is Mr. Mason.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just to be clear, that's where I started, yes. He can fix things faster than I can, far faster. Anyway, thank you for your report. Thank you.
That brings, yes?
I don't want to reiterate everything that Ms. Dickoff said, I just want to, thank you for bringing up those issues, and I want to reiterate what you both said, it's really valuable for you to communicate information, because sometimes information doesn't get from student to parents, for some of the reasons that you mentioned, and maybe people are embarrassed that they accidentally brought kids in there and didn't know, but that information gets back to, whether it's Mr. Mason, or Mr. Myers, or whether it comes through this, it's really valuable for us to hear that kind of information. And also the good things that are working well, it's really nice also to hear. So it's disappointing to hear that there are some safety issues that need to be addressed, but at the same time, I'm really glad that students and teachers are liking the new schedule, after working it through a little bit, that they're really enjoying it, that's also really good feedback to have. And it would also be interesting for the school, for Headmaster Myers to know that perhaps that advisory time could be used as club meeting time, and if that's a good use of that time. So I really appreciate not only bringing up concerns, but suggestions for improvement. So I think that's really beneficial, so I thank you for that as well.
Thank you. That brings us to our interim superintendent report.
Thank you. So I'll focus on a few things tonight. Here's the report, sorry. I don't think so. So first, I'll please report on a very successful, I'll focus on the school opening first. We had a very successful opening, many facets to the start of the year, and I'll highlight a few of them. Going back a little bit into the summertime, our leadership team, which consisted of principals and senior leadership, our Deputy Superintendents and myself began preparing for September back in July, starting with a four-day workshop. This meeting happened actually immediately after Superintendent Bot announced his intention to resign, which sort of shifted the sort of tone and tenor of the meeting. It actually proved incredibly productive, and sort of, we were able to sort of build our team, build our community, come together stronger as a team, and really identify a shared focus for the year. This year, our leadership team will focus on developing common procedures in a few key areas, working together in common areas of practice, such as our professional development days, our effective, making effective faculty meetings, and also growing stronger school cultures. So that's what we'll work on as a team of principals and central office leaders. The school year unofficially kicked off for our eight or so educational leaders with our annual workshop, which is held at Austin University's Willlock College Campus. And in addition to catching up with each other after a summer apart, we spent the day learning more about educational equity, the challenging fiscal climate we face this year, budgeting processes, procedures, our new code of conduct, and responsibilities to students under Title IX and Title VI. Following these three, moving on to, we also had a new teacher orientation from August 27th and 29th. The first day was paraprofessionals and our teachers, guidance counselors, unit A members, and then the 27th and 28th, 27th and 28th were all those folks together, and then the 29th was a school-based day, where all the staff worked at the schools they're based at. When we turned, when the calendar turned to September, we were prepared, and as you know, teachers report for two workdays before students arrive. In addition to preparing our classrooms and meeting with their colleagues, teachers also participate in school-based faculty meetings. And then as is the custom, BU President Jess Wender Shubow and I crisscross Brookline together, visit all schools, including BHS and Beep, on September 3rd and 4th to present welcoming remarks at these faculty meetings. My opening remarks focused on my reasons for seeking to be interim, what our staff can expect from me and what I expect from them. I shared my intention to successfully serve as, my hope to serve as a bridge to the next superintendent, and offer stability to this district during what promised to be a challenging year. I reiterated my pledge to serve as a positive and civil leader, who will listen closely and work with others to find solutions to the challenges we face. I asked our staff to lean in, help out, and support others when they make mistakes. I closed my remarks by stressing how essentially each one of us, each one of our school-based staff members and our central office colleagues are to making our schools work for our students, and saying clearly, "We are all the public schools of Brookline." I've heard again and again how well-organized these, thoughtful these opening days were for our staff at their schools. All schools had some initial training on the new code of conduct procedures and approach, and then each school organized the rest of the time to support their staff aligned with their school's needs. I'll share just a couple examples, from the Lawrence School, and also from the Coolidge Corner School. At Lawrence, all faculty and staff worked with the Riverside Community Health Center to learn about supporting students who have experienced trauma. This was, teachers and staff reported to Principal Crowley that this training was incredibly powerful and impactful for them. At the Coolidge Corner School, also had very strong opening days, Principal Buller prepared all summer, meeting with staff and families, as she and her vice principals mapped out how to make progress on their two primary goals for the year, community building, identifying clear procedures for staff and families. All CCS staff worked with Jessica Minahan, author of the Behavior Code, to learn more about proactively addressing and responding to tricky behaviors triggered by student anxiety. That's something that staff really were asking for and hoping for, and Principal Buller and her team, it sounds like they put together, were able to bring in just a fabulous expert to really help staff learn deeply about some of those challenges. The staff also reviewed and became familiar with the New Staff Resource Guide, which clarifies expectations for operational procedures and processes, such as child study teams, attendance, lunch supervision, safety plans, and much, much more. The first day of school for students in grades 1 to 9 was on Thursday, September 5th, as you all know, and by all accounts, it was a great success. I watched the 9th graders at Brookline High School participate in the annual rite of passage, proceeding from Cypress Field into the quad, led by their junior-class mentors and cheered on by the BHS staff. I also visited Heath School, Coolidge Corner School, and Peer School, as well as the early education classrooms on Clark Road on opening day. This week, I've been able to visit all of our schools to see firsthand the positive and powerful start we are off to. Our students are learning the new routines in their classrooms, teachers are explaining expectations, the middle school students at Lincoln are taking responsibility for their composting program, kindergartners are learning their letters through singing, and 9th graders are doing a fantastic job traveling to and from a Lincoln school. We've also been working with the police to make sure, with the police and administrators at the high school, to make sure that it's happening safely, and will continue to do, and they'll have the support on an ongoing basis that's needed to make sure they do that safely. But the 9th graders from Mr. Mason's and Mr. Myers' reports have been just fabulous in working together with them and doing a nice job of that. An important component in a successful school year is providing effective support to our district leaders. To that end, we've identified mentors for Torrance Lewis, the Baker School Principal, Dr. Tolu Dar, the Driscoll School Principal, and we're close to finalizing mentors for Jennifer Buller and Casey No Miller, our Deputy Superintendent for Student Services. We're confident that with the support of professional and skilled mentors, our newest leaders will continue to grow and thrive. Finally, I wrote to parents on Thursday evening, which I share with you, that's attached to interest myself and welcome to the school year. I want to talk a little bit about the successful opening of Clark Road. Police report that three new early education classrooms opened at Clark Road earlier this week. One of those classes was previously located at Driscoll School, and I'll talk to you a little bit about the changes at Driscoll because of that. It took an amazing amount of work by many of our colleagues to orchestrate this move over the summer. In addition to the beep classrooms, the Clark Road site will also house, be the new location for many central office staff, more than 40 folks that are moving from Webster Place. The early education staff and adult education have already moved there, they moved in late August. At the end of next week, they'll be joined by more staff, including food service, transportation operations, and success program staff. Our special education colleagues who are currently housed on the 4th floor of Town Hall will also be moving to Clark Road, and that space downstairs will open up to be our Office of Enrollment and Registration, and our Office of English Language Education Staff. That really will serve in many ways as a welcome center, and that's why we want to have it here, so it's easily accessible for all families through multiple forms of transportation. And it's also actually a much better area in terms of waiting rooms, areas to screen English language learners and other students, and just make sure our newest families are being really welcomed. So we're excited about that change here. So moving once off is difficult any time of the year, and so we've had a lot of support, and we are really paying attention to how we're supporting our staff with just information, materials, resources, furniture, and getting it moved done. There's still a lot of work to do before they're able- There's still a lot of work to do before they're able to move successfully next week. I will say that the space at Clark Road has exceeded our expectations. It's clean, bright, well organized, and spacious, and it has taken a full team effort to really get launched there after the decision, sort of midsummer. I want to thank directly our BEEP teachers, Melissa Lyons, Quaycu Donkor, and Ashley Zimmerman, for all their hard work in opening these classrooms. Also thank you, Ed Clancy, our custodial staff, and the town's building department for their incredible work to get the building ready. Thank you to our town IT department, who literally strung fiber, or had people string fiber from BHS to Clark Road so we'd have internet and phone service. I didn't know we could do that, but apparently we can. And also thank you to two tremendous leaders, Matt Gillis and Regina Watts. Matt Gillis worked on so many levels with so many people in order to order furniture, get the technology working, finalized the lease, worked with my nominees, organized the move, and get packing arranged. He's still doing it every single day. And then Regina Watts, our interim principal at BEEP, who supported teachers and parents and cajoled and cleaned and troubleshooted and literally willed these classrooms into existence. She's just been fantastic, and we could not have done it without her or Matt. A quick aside on this is, I was in Driscoll today and saw the, so we opened up a BEEP room, as you know, you guys made a difficult decision to move a BEEP classroom from Driscoll to the Clark Road site. That has gone very well for Driscoll especially. They have moved a kindergarten classroom into that classroom, which was vacated by BEEP, and that has given them much more room for two different rooms, basically. They were able to move a room that was jam-packed with literacy support and special education support, and split that into the old kindergarten room. These two rooms are now incredibly well organized, spacious learning spaces, one for a special education center, which has special education teachers, learning specialists, working with different grades, and then a literacy support classroom as well. Again, look, organized into small learning centers, also well organized, and just really a big success, which Principal Tlukdar was really excited about. So that's, that we are hoping to give Driscoll some relief there, and I think it's really working out quite well so far. I have some statistics that's on student enrollment and registration so far. As it says, underlying and bold here, these are unofficial. They won't be official until October 1st, like they are every year. Right now, we have 582 students in kindergarten, but I expect that to go over 590 shortly. We still have plenty of students in the queue, what we call pre-registration, that are just finishing screening and confirming their immunizations and that sort of thing. So we expect that number to go over 590 in the next few days. You can see here, our Office of Enrollment and Registration has been incredibly busy. 507 students have registered just in July and August. 60% of those students were identified as needing a mandated English language screening. So that's 304 students who had to be screened in those two months alone, July and August. These are comprehensive screenings. They take about an hour and a quarter for each student. So I really want to hand it to our English language education department for, as they do every year, really doing a great job taking care of those students and their families and making sure that they're assessed so they can get the proper support if they need it. And just looking back a little bit further, this year, we have 1,139 students, and actually 1,281 if you include BEEP students that are new to Brookline. Doesn't mean we gained that many students, because obviously, you know, that includes kindergarten, includes people who have moved in. More than 7% of our student body in grades one through 12 are new to the districts this September. Okay? Our enrollment remains dynamic, as I said, throughout the month of September, and as we do every year, we'll give you the official enrollment. The official enrollment is set and reported as of October 1st. We do a fair bit of checking to make sure that that number is accurate before we submit it to the Department of Ed, and typically get you the accurate official count later in October. So we'll be doing the same thing for you. Couple more things, as you know, I just want to report, as I will all year, on our work with our kindergarten teachers. Dr. Nicole Gittens, Dr. Regina Watts, Dr. Mary Brown, Joanna Lieberman, and myself are continuing our work to develop and plan, and our work with the kindergarten teachers that'll happen this year. On Friday, September 6th, I met with, for two hours with 14 kindergarten teachers at the Driscoll School Library. Couple of folks were there, Ms. Fetterspiel and Dr. Romowitz. I thought it was a sort of a very powerful and productive, just beginning, some first steps for us, giving them a chance to get to know me, giving me a chance to really listen closely to their concerns and their thoughts. And so it was very helpful to me, and I trust helpful to them. We'll be working with them over the course of four different days, and we're starting to plan that based on some of the input they gave us at that meeting. And our work really will be focusing on everything from play-based learning, reading and writing, instruction and schedules, reading levels, other things like integrated units. But really, in listening to folks, I think it's pretty clear, there seems to be just, how do I say this, there's a lot of things going on, first of all, but just a couple of things, some disconnect and misunderstanding about expectations and what folks expect and what they think they need or require to do, and also a really wide range of opinion on play-based learning, on instruction, explicit instruction literacy. And so it's really going to take just a lot of learning together among the kindergarten teachers to sort of get on the same page about what that all means together. So I don't want to, in this short little snippet, I don't want to simplify it at all. I don't mean to, and I don't want to diminish concerns at all, they're very significant and very important. But I do think we haven't supported kindergarten teachers the way they need to be supported over the last few years. And it used to be that kindergarten teachers would get together every year as a group for numerous relief days, and they haven't for other reasons for a few years. And I think that's one of the reasons that there's been a real sort of fraying of a common understanding. And so I think getting folks together and working very closely with them, and having them work closely together will really make some progress on that. So it's important work, and you'll keep on hearing about it from me. And then one last thing, I just want to have, just want to highlight some work the Brookline High School Innovation Fund has been doing to support our schools and high school. The BHS Innovation Fund and their generous FY20 program awards. As you know, the Innovation Fund fosters a culture of innovation at Brookline High School by supporting the development of new interdisciplinary courses and school-wide programs that prepare Brookline students to thrive in an ever-changing, complex world. This year, the fund will support the following programs at BHS totaling over $240,000, and they include experiential physics for ninth grade, which is a robust new physics course that develops scientific engineering and entrepreneurial skills in our students. HUB, which is an updated approach to school-wide advisory that emphasizes community and connection among students, faculty, and a homeroom-style setting, integrating BHS and PSB practices such as finding yourself in the curriculum, mindfulness, which is also an initiative, an Innovation Fund initiative, and a restorative justice. HUB will be responsive to all these changing needs and concerns of the entire high school. I believe they're really focusing on ninth grade right now. And that's where HUB is really sort of operating and focusing on. And then Brookline Lens, which is a career-focused arts elective that gives students the opportunity to learn business management skills as part of a student-run production company that provides photography and videography services to the community. I've actually been in touch with Alicia Miller and the leader of Brookline, teacher of Brookline Lens, to perhaps do a stop-gap video documentation of the BHS renovation project, is something that we may be doing. And then finding yourself in the curriculum, which is a program sharing and celebrating identity and equity lesson plans in various BHS departments, and the BHS Innovation Fellowship, which is supporting a faculty member to explore an area of interest while serving as a catalyst for innovation in the BHS community. The 2019-20 fellow will focus on integrating climate impact and global sustainability topics into the BHS culture and curriculum. We are incredibly grateful to the Innovation Fund for their amazing support of Brookline High School educators and students. So that is catching up on a lot of good news that has happened in not too much time. I promise the superintendent's report will not always be that long, but I do take it as a chance to really highlight some of the great work that our students and our staff are doing. So thank you for your attention.
Yes, Ms. Carter.
Do you know who the fellow was that is doing whatever it would be, the global?
I'm not, and I will find out.
I'm an impact in global sustainability.
I was reading that to myself, I was wondering the same thing. I'll find out and let you know.
I'm sorry if I, I'm sorry if I missed this, but has there been any, how consistent are school policies on the pending student climate walkout? Yeah, I mean, is there differentiation between the middle schools and the high schools, or is there a townwide, what's going on with that?
So a few principals reached out to me. In the past, what we've done, whether, I'll give you two examples. One was the, there was a sort of student, I can't remember the name, like sort of peace strike or protest after the Parkland shooting two years ago. And then last year, there actually was a youth climate strike scheduled for March 14th, which turned out to be a snow day, as a matter of fact. So we have not yet, we are working on now, clear communication and guidance for principals to use on that. That includes, you know, supporting students if they make that choice, making sure parents know that students will be, will have space provided on school property where they can safely protest. It will also provide, we have a clear statement about students and staff, making sure that students can make their own choice whether to participate or not, and that should be no pressure or coercion from folks to, from either student or staff, to participate or not. But that, because you can never have that in our schools. We will leave it up to, we are still working on things such as if there are any consequences, those may differ, high school to the middle school, for example. And so we'll have clear guidance on that as well. I do want to say that we will support our students in making that choice, and we'll also use it as a teachable moment, perhaps both about, you know, the climate awareness, but also advocacy, protest, and civil disobedience.
Yeah, if I can make two comments. One is, well, thank you for all of this, thank you for a smooth start. The 60% of students registered over the summer were English learners. I just, Barbara, I think we mentioned last year that we want to take kind of a deeper dive look into that whole department to make sure they have the support they need. And this 60% seems very high, and it will require support services. So at some point down the road, I think maybe Curriculum Subcommittee last spring said that they might take a look. So just kind of a reminder that that need hasn't gone away. And then the other thing is, I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to meet with the kindergarten teachers. I think it was a good conversation. It was a brave conversation on their part to come to your superintendent and really have a good conversation back and forth. Everything's not been resolved, but we do have, you have meetings planned, and I am really hopeful and impressed with our kindergarten teachers. They really have a good grasp on what the covers, what the issues are and the challenges, and are coming forthright to speak about it. So thank you for that opportunity, and I will be in touch with you about that.
Yes, Ms. Dickoff.
I just want to, yes, I'm glad you're watching. I support that fully. I also want to make sure that my commitment to this is crystal clear, and that I will make sure that you folks are, whether you're watching or not, are fully informed as we go along and fully updated, because it's an important part for the whole, for the school system, for their, for community and our parents, and obviously, most importantly, for our children. So thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Ms. Fetterspiel.
Yes, Ms. Dickoff.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you, Mr. Lamas. This is a very comprehensive report. It's long, but a lot of things have been happening. And I guess what I was reflecting on as I was listening to you talk is that there are very few people I can imagine who could deliver a report like this after three weeks in seat, two, three, I don't know. Not quite three. Okay, not quite three weeks in the seat. Not only do you know what all these words mean, and who these people are, and where these places are, but the ability to kind of pull together a report like this and to do all of this work is tremendous. So, thank you. This is really a lot. This is a lot, this would be a lot for a full-time, permanent, you know, superintendent who's been in the seat for a long time to do all of this, and it's a lot for an interim who's been here for less than three weeks. Thank you.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Perlman. And we're going to take this one as the last comment on the superintendent report, and then we're going to go on.
I also thank you for the thoroughness of this report. I do have a question about the schedules for kindergarten. Has that changed yet, or what's the status of that?
Yeah, so, great. So in my, I think it's attached here, the August 6th, oh, not August 6th, sorry, I don't remember the date, but the first communication I had directly with the kindergarten teachers through email, because they hadn't started yet, is in your packet here, attached to the superintendent's report. In there, I laid out, I responded, in communication over the summertime, and with Superintendent Bott in the very end of last year, they had four major concerns that they sort of listed out, one of them being about the schedules, well, two parts of the schedule. One is their established choice or playtime during their schedules. And I said, and as we worked on it, and where the principals said very clearly, they should have at least 60 minutes during the school day. If they don't at that point, at that point when I sent the email, they should work with their principals to do just that. My understanding at this point is they've worked that out, and those who didn't have it do have it now. Not always contiguous, but that they have, you know, space in their schedules for that. The other piece of the schedules is how the schedules are developed, and with whom, and how much, to what extent they limit the flexibility of kindergarten teachers. And that's a longer-term challenge. There have been some adjustments, for example, at one school, they wanted some more flexibility in terms of where they put their classroom, where they put their subjects areas. We've been trying to align, for example, where any grade, first, second, third, or kindergarten, for example, may have their English language arts classes, literacy classes, literacy time, I should say, because that helps to then provide support to any students who need extra support, LLI, reading recovery, or particularly literacy specialists in the classroom. So that's one of the reasons that we tried to align some of that. At this school, the teachers wanted to move away from having those blocks, sorry, I should explain this in a different way. They wanted to move away from having those blocks defined for them, so the principal allowed them to do that, and give them the flexibility. So now that's where they are. So that happens school by school, that sort of changes. That's not something that, you know, we were determined from here, because we don't have the knowledge of the specific needs of the school. But so we've been able to give them some flexibility in some places, and it's happening on a school-by-school basis.
Dr. Romowitz, you had something very quick?
Very quick. Thanks for the, thank you for the report. I'm wondering if we can plan to have a readout on student and educator uptake of the new code of conduct in a few months, once we've had time to let things settle in? Is that something that we can look forward to?
Folks ask for it, we deliver it, yeah.
Yes, one, something we are trying to do with, as Ms. Fetterspiel and I are working with the superintendent to set the agendas, we are trying to have each meeting that, you know, has a main topic, and to switch those up, so that we're talking about specification, capital, and other parts. And so I think that that would be great to have Ms. No Miller come and talk about that and some of the other things that are going on with respect to her department.
Let me just add quickly to that, which is, we will be sharing and discussing with you our priorities for the school year at our next meeting, two weeks from now, and that is one of them, implementing that and rolling that out. And so we will report back to you on a regular basis on those priority areas throughout the year. So that certainly also fits. I do want to add one thing, is that on the professional development day, the sort of district-wide piece of that day, the one district-wide piece, will be the next sort of steps on training on code of conduct as well. So that's the next step for that, so.
So as we move on in the agenda, I just want to touch base with the committee. We are, we have less than an hour left in our meeting, and more than an hour left in our agenda. And so I just want to touch base with where we are on our priorities for tonight, and whether we'd like to have, also recognizing that Ms. Cooley has been here for many hours to get ready for this part of the presentation, and so put that plug in. But then I do want to talk about the amount of time that we'd like to spend talking on the different items. I guess, Mr. Perlman.
I was wondering if we could alter the order so that we could perhaps have our first report from capital, what happened at the most recent capital improvements meeting, and then move into the discussion of whether school committees should hold a public hearing regarding the town warrant articles specifically about Driscoll. There's obviously tremendous interest in that, and given that we might be stopping around 9:30, I wouldn't want to see that get dropped, so if we could maybe alter the order.
So, yes, Ms. Monopoly.
I was going to make the same request that Mr. Perlman made. I will not repeat it.
So, Ms. Charlefsky? So, Ms. Sharlefsky, being at seven, and at different points in time, all nine members of the school committee were present at the capital subcommittee meeting. Ms. Sharlefsky has assured me that her capital report will be brief, and so we will take a moment to shift to her capital update.
So it will be brief and to the point, and I think the, we, just to quickly go through, we did talk about renaming the office of student affairs, it is now the office of registration and enrollment. We talked about the CIP and some, some of the things that, all the things that were done over the summer from the mini CIP and other funding sources. And then we got to the school facility capital plan. Ms. Norman shared with us the document that I think everybody got online, you may not have it here, about the short-term and long-term options that, that we have been looking at in terms of our, our enrollment problem and how we plan to address it. Most everybody was at the meeting except for Mr. Glover, at the end. You, you were both there at the beginning, Mr. Glover and Dr. Bramavitz, but we discussed in depth different possibilities, what we needed to do in terms of our long-term planning and our short-term planning. And then, basically, we came to a point after quite a while where we had a motion that we voted unanimously to recommend to the school committee to move forward with the three-school solution, that being renovating Driscoll to four sections plus three bips, renovating and expanding Pierce to five sections, and the three-section plus-plus ninth school. Newbury is currently under consideration as a potential site for a ninth school, provided the test fit comes back positive, and that we should have by October 2nd. And the fallback location, if for some reason Newbury were not to become the ninth school, would be a two-section plus-plus at the old Lincoln School. Two-section because that's all that can fit in there, plus some, possibly a couple bips, possibly English language program or some special ed program. We then discussed the next steps, including the timing of a potential school committee vote on a recommendation to the school board. And some members suggested that we schedule a school committee vote on Driscoll as quickly as possible. Other members suggested holding a vote after school, the capital meeting on October 2nd, and then having a joint select board, school committee, public hearing. And so we, the timeline for all of this was, was a little bit unclear, but it seems to me that at this point, we can, I would like to propose that at this point, we can tell the selectmen certainly the vote that we had in terms of our long-term plan, that being Driscoll four, Pierce five, and a three-section ninth school. I would feel comfortable with that at this point. I think that it's a, it gives direction, it helps us in our discussions with Newbury, it helps also to open up the conversation about old Lincoln School and where people, what people feel about that. In terms, I'm not in charge of doing the hearing, so I'm not going to weigh in on when exactly that should be. I think that's probably for the selectmen to decide, and since they are the ones who will eventually decide on a debt exclusion override date. So I, if I said anything that wasn't exactly the way it was with somebody, or if you have anything to add to what came out at our meeting.
I wanted to add, when you said that the fallback location, my understanding was that the will of the capital subcommittee was to, that it, that's not a choice, that that is just what would, what would happen.
I guess that's what I meant, absolutely, but what you're saying is correct. This is not our first choice, not our second choice, nor our third choice. But we may not have a choice. So that's, that's basically, we own it, we can use it, and that would be our, our possible avenue for solving our, our overcrowding.
So is there any further comments about the capital update?
I'm not, I'm not sure if this qualifies under the capital update. My, my question is, someone mentioned that there was a September 17th meet, public hearing. What is, could someone clarify for me what that is and why we're not in on it for a joint hearing? I, I just need clarification.
I'm not aware of anything from September, on September 17th, but it's possible that advise, does advisory have a meeting on the 17th?
I think the 17th is the, I think September 17th is the select board meeting, and that is when they are taking up the Driscoll warrant article.
When they are having their hearing on the Driscoll four warrant article?
There's a warrant article that just deals with Driscoll four, and that's what that is.
Well, I'm just looking for clarification on the process because I simply just don't know the answer, and that was new information for me. How does that differ from, we've had public hearings before, we've had a joint public hearing with select board before, last year. And so I'm just wondering whether or not that's something that we, would that qualify as our public hearing on that? Are we having a different public hearing? I ju, I'm just looking for clarification, because that was just new information for me, and I'm trying to put that into sort of where we stand and whether or not we can move forward with that.
So as we're transitioning then to a discussion about the public hearings and the warrant articles?
Well, maybe we should first get a vote, actually, on the subcommittee's recommendation to the select board. I think that would be.
So, no, so that's one possibility, or you're proposing a vote. I had, Mr. Proman had reached out to legal counsel, and I had also reached out to legal counsel, about whether we would be able to take a vote on the, on, take a position on this. And I think that there is concern that it would be unfair to the public because of what we had docketed, so under the open meeting law, that there's nothing on the agenda that would alert members of the public who had not been, you know, who are not here in the meeting tonight, might not have been in the meeting at the capital subcommittee meeting, that the wording of the agenda does not notify the public that we might be taking a vote on something of this significance? And so.
I guess I, I want to push back a little bit. Well, did you have another understanding?
Just, my understanding's a bit different because part of the response has a direct quote from an open meeting law finding, and I read, "It is reasonably foreseeable that a public body may take action and hold a vote following discussion of a topic listed on a meeting notice, even where the notice topic does not indicate the possibility of a vote." And that was as recently as 2015. So I certainly think it would be within the scope for us to endorse the recommendation of the capital subcommittee.
So I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't having a different interpretation of that same email that, that I had had further, I had had a different conversation. And so I just want to clarify that we're not having different readings of that same email, that the advice that I had received was that it is, would be outside of the scope, you know, would likely be outside of the scope, and that we should not take a position on it. And so, again, I just, I worry that we, we have, I think we've had four open meeting law violation complaints filed against us by maybe even some members, some members who have been in the room this evening. And so I, I think that with such a very important, such a long, a conversation we've been having for a long time, we've put a lot of work into it, we've had a number of meetings over the summer, and so I just have a lot of concern about us taking a vote and doing something that might call into question a decision, a very valid decision, a decision that I think many of us are, are ready to take and are wanting to take, and that we've all, you know, are, are encouraged by the enthusiasm that we have from the Driscoll community. But I just wonder if this is the right course of action at this moment. I guess, Ms. Scato, and then Ms. Dickoff.
Is it possible that we could schedule with the board of selectmen a joint hearing about the Driscoll school, and then after that, meet by ourselves and take a vote on it so it could go forward?
It's possible, it is, it is possible. I can talk with the select board, again, I wasn't even aware until this evening that the select board was having that. We have a joint hearing that we're scheduling with the select board that will be taking place on October 3rd or October, oh, I'm sorry, sort of 7th or October 10th. And so, and we are, we could also, tonight, something that we could do is that we could make the decision to schedule a hearing on the Driscoll four warrant article, and so that we could take that up for hearing, so then we could make our own recommendation as well. So that is something.
I think we should do one of those two things. I think it's really important to get Driscoll moving along.
I agree. Ms. Dickoff.
So just one thought on process. I am looking at the wording of our agenda this evening, and the word, I'm not even sure the word Driscoll appears on it, so I do appreciate, as much as I don't like it, I do appreciate the legal counsel's guidance about taking a vote on that. That said, since many of us were in the room, I do wonder whether the capital subcommittee chair could ask for a sense of the room.
Well, actually, I, I was thinking of something different.
And, and so, just to finish, it seems to me that there's sort of a two-step process here. One step is our recommitment to the, the four, three, four, five idea. That, to me, feels like entirely within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. It's a, it's the pedagogical model, it's what we're looking for, it's what we're hoping for. And it is not dependent on any specific issues around Newbury, it is not dependent on any specific issues around anything really, around warrant articles or anything else. That is, we, we committed to the community that we would, over the summer, spend time thinking about the various, to go back to the drawing board, think about various choices, and that's what the result is of that. So I do think that there is some value to communicating to the community the notion that what this isn't is a, you know, 1,800 child middle school at Newbury, six, seven, eight. It is not busing kindergarteners from all around the district to an early ed center with 900 children. It is not a magnet school, it is not an immersion school. There are a lot of things that this thing isn't, and I think it's important that, that, as the, as being asked to sort of, and being the owners of, the responsible for, not owners, responsible for the sort of pedagogical model that we would like to put forward, it feels to me like that is something that we can do and we should do potentially without the selectmen, because that's, that's our purview. That said, there are a very important piece of this that the select board owns, namely putting things on ballots and warrant articles and whatnot. So I guess what I'm wondering is whether there's sort of a two-step approach. One is to say, here is this three-part pedagogical model that we believe is the right way to go, and yes, there is a public hearing component to that. People might come and say, no, they want an 1,800 student middle school, they want a 900 child, you know, busing kindergarteners all over the, I mean, like, the people can come say whatever they like, but it does feel to me like that is one decision. Then within that, there's sort of a second decision of, you know, what goes on the ballot, when, whether things are on at the same time, whether they're on at different times, what's happening with Newbury. Like, there's a bunch of stuff underneath that, but it feels to me like that is the first piece of it. And so I guess for that one, I guess I'm not sure why we would need to wait until October, because our, the vote of capital was basically to say, we would like to see a ninth school, and absent something like Newbury, we will begin building that at OLS. And so almost, it's, it, I don't say it's disconnected from the October, but it's a diff, but it, it feels to me like a two-step process. So I guess I would just ask, is there any way that we can see if there's a sense that that is the kind of thing that we want to have a public hearing on? And then I think there might be other things that fall out of that, but that, that would be my recommendation.
So, in concert with what you're saying, what I would ask for is a reaffirmation of our three-pronged solution that we have had for the last year or longer to try and, and solve our overcrowding, and that would be the three, four, and five. And I, I, I think it's just a reaffirmation of what we've already decided a number of times.
I apologize for having had to leave the capital subcommittee meeting early. I really wanted to be there for this discussion. Frankly, I'm happy to move forward with whatever the direction the will of the committee decides to choose, but it seems to me like there's a very clear four, and there's a very clear five, but the three is very up in the air. And so, you know, while we can move forward with a three, four, or five solution, you know, theoretically, is it possible for us to definitively move forward with a vote on the specifics of the four and five, understanding that the three is pending further discussion so that the four solution, the four Driscoll solution, doesn't get tied up in a prolonged process about what the three is going to be? There is a lot of concern about that. There's a lot of concern about how linking, linking Pierce five and Driscoll four to an as-yet undecided three could delay progress.
And so can we bring the recommendation from the subcommittee to the full committee and have a vote on that, or?
Tonight? No. Not, in my opinion, that we, based on legal counsel, no, I do not believe that we can. It's not docketed. And, and we had, this was the discussion that we had at our last workshop of the, the time, when we talked about the timing and having that capital subcommittee meeting so close in time to this school committee meeting, we had acknowledged that that was too quick to turn around and have capital subcommittee and then a discussion and vote on it at that next school committee meeting, which is why we had decided to have a discussion of other things tonight, so that we could have the time for capital to make its decision, and then that be processed, set out into the community, then to be able to have a hearing on it, and then to be able to have a vote on it. And so, just because of the closeness in time, that's what we had decided, which is why it wasn't docketed for this evening, because that is what we had decided going back at our last workshop.
And I think, if I remember correctly, so please correct me if I'm wrong, at that time, we were docketing, we were planning to have a docketed public hearing like next week, which then has been delayed, so I think that's where the issue is. So I, I agree, we were going to have, capital was going to meet, then we were going to have a public.
We were also supposed to have a presentation on Newbury and what that could accommodate.
Right, which we did, which we don't have, but I guess my interest is, at this time is, I'd like us to be able, like, let's figure out when we can have that public hearing as soon as possible, and then when can we vote on what it is that we are putting forth to select board? Because a whole bunch of the other issues that Susan brought up, those are select board decisions, which we cannot control. So we can only make the recommendation for what it is that school committee would like, but that is wherein our power lies, that, that's it, is to make the recommendation, and select board needs to take the next step. So I would be interested in seeing what is, what, like, how fast can we move this forward instead of waiting like another few weeks? I don't know, some, there were a number of people who wanted to talk.
To Ms. Monopoly's point, could we try to get a joint hearing with the select board for September 17th? If at least five of us can make it, that would hopefully move things along, we could docket it very clearly. There would be a robust discussion that night, it would be, I think, the most economical way to proceed. I was very persuaded by Ms. McClellan's point earlier, about $175,000 a day for each day that we wait. A week? A week? Okay, a week. That's, it's significant, and I don't think we need to be doing that. It seems to be the will of at least a majority of us to proceed with Driscoll four, so we might as well have this joint hearing as soon as we can.
So, again, I'm going to, our, our very brief update from capital has now expanded a while, so if there's nothing, if anyone has anything new to add, otherwise I think that it makes sense for, the direction of the committee is for us to follow up, Ms. Fetterspiel and myself will follow up with the select board to see what their Fetterfield and myself will follow up with the Select Board to see what their schedule is and whether we are able to piggyback on their hearing. We will poll the committee to find out about availability. We will look to see if that's not an option, to see if there is another time in short order that we can have our own hearing on the Driscoll Four option, and then we can go forward in that fashion. Is the direction, can we, under the Capitol, you also talked about Newberry?
Well, that's what, I actually want, I forgot to put in that piece.
We're good, though. We're gonna be moving on. But also, is the, is the direction of the committee for us to maintain the schedule as we have our next joint hearing as it pertains to Newberry? So we're holding that date so that we can continue to move along with this discussion. And we will secure one of the 7th or the 10th as the date for the joint hearing on that as well.
I, I'm not hearing opposition to having Newberry come forward on October 7th or 10th. I'm hearing opposition to waiting until October 7th or 10th to discuss Driscoll. So that's why I'm trying to sort of say, it feels to me like a two-step approach. And maybe in the conversation, I think that somehow we should be able to, either from the Capitol Subcommittee unanimous vote and the sense of the room this evening, that, that, there is a sense that there were four votes there and I'm not, three? Three, okay. So three members, and I'm not sensing overwhelming opposition to that. And I think it's important to convey to the Select Board before their Tuesday night hearing, the sense of the committee meeting, which was three hours long, and this discussion and, and the direction that although we can't take a vote for open meeting law reasons, which I appreciate, there is a clear sense of this committee. And so, I do wonder whether, at the very latest, on the 26th, we can have a hearing and a vote on just your piece, not the, not the Newberry piece, just the three-part solution, because that takes a lot of things off the table and then have a public hear, because, do it as part of our meeting, a public hearing and vote, and then move forward with Newberry in October? Because it does feel to me like we need to set out this three-part solution before we then say, okay, so what does the Newberry piece look like? So it, basically what it means is that this week, like tomorrow or whatever, that we summarize what Capitol said and send a memo to the Select Board and then-
From Capitol?
From Capitol, right. And, and a sense of this evening, just a sense of the committee. It's not a vote, it's not binding, it's not legal, it is a sense of the discussion. That's not illegal. And that, so I have a discussion about potentially joining, you know, crashing their meeting on Tuesday, but also, if that's not possible and it's not possible to have the discussion there, that we docket it for no later than the 26th, the public hearing and a vote for no later than the 26th. So that's my suggestion.
So, do we have any different thoughts or anything different to that?
I have a question. There's been a lot of discussions about Select Board hearings and warrant articles and when the special town meeting is happening. I am confused about whether or not there's a drop-dead deadline in the next four weeks when we need to kind of give a thought to Driscoll for it to be considered for the, for the November town meeting. There's no connection.
There is a drop-dead, it's not in the next, so-
Vote.
So, it's the override, death exclusion vote. You have to have 35 days' notice for that.
So there are two separate issues here. The Select Board has to approve a death exclusion. The death exclusion can happen 35 days after their approval. Town meeting needs to appropriate money. It can do it before or after, usually, it's after a death exclusion. So those are the pieces, are the dates. And so you could, in order to have an election on the 5th or on the, the following week, I don't know what it is, the 12th, you would have to have, the Select Board have a decision for the 5th, I think it's October 2nd, correct me if I'm first, October 1st, and for the following week, it would just be a week later.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Um, I, I just want to say that I can agree with Ms. Wolf-Dickoff's suggestion that we just get a sense of the room in terms of willingness to move forward rather expeditiously towards a public hearing and a vote on the three-school solution.
One quick question, which is, I, I understand there's a hearing on the warrant article next week, a Select Board about Driscoll. I have not heard yet, I don't think, if, if Select Board is moving forward on scheduling a hea, a hearing or a vote on putting Driscoll on the ballot, on the townwide ballot.
No, that's different.
And, well, but, but, right, so, but, but that actually is as important, if not more important, than the town meeting vote in terms of moving a project forward. So I guess my question is, who is working or communicating or nudging Select Board to schedule that?
And my, my concern is getting the same people to come out two or three times for hearings when we could put it all together as one hearing and allow everybody to speak at that one time. I don't think it's fair to the public to, to keep on coming, or for us, for that matter.
Yes, and it all is a concern every single time at this time of year. There's also, I'm not sure of the date, but there is also an advisory committee meeting on this as well.
So this next Monday, this, so this is just for the warrant article, this isn't gonna help us get it on the ballot? Does, yes, no, maybe?
It is for us-
You don't agree with that?
It is for us to opine on the warrant article for town meeting. That's what that hearing is for. Their hearing.
Tell me more, Ms. Dickoff, I'm interested.
We are going to be here all night, guys, so-
It seems to me that in a discussion of, a docketed discussion of the warrant article on Driscoll, a reasonable question is, how does this fit into the school committee's overall plan? And that is a place where the sense of the committee could be discussed, right, or could be, could be heard, if that makes sense.
The docketed discussion is on whether we should hold-
No, no, not the second. She's talking about next week. Not this, not today.
You're not wanting to have that under this, you're saying-
We cannot do that today. I am agreeing that by open meeting law, words Driscoll are not even on here, we cannot vote on Driscoll. I'm agreeing with that. It's, I, it's, I mean, maybe we could and risk it, but it doesn't seem wise. Like, it feels to me like there is more or less consensus here. We do not have a legally binding vote, but it is clear enough to be able to write a memo to the Select Board. Your question is, like, could we discuss this next week in a discussion of the warrant article? And my sense is, yes, we could.
Next week?
If, if the, no, no, yes. Or we could actually speak, I mean, one thing that happens at public hearings on warrant articles is that sometimes the school committee is asked to speak at a public hearing. So we are asked all the time to speak at advisory or ask it, speak at Select Board about issues that relate to the schools. So another thing that Ms. Charlofsky could do, or someone else, or some number of us could do, is go speak at that and represent just the sense of the evening, the room this evening and represent the Capitol Subcommittee vote. So that's a different way to do it.
Someone could speak, someone could speak about the sense from Capitol Subcommittee and the sense there. I think that we need to be very aware of what we're speaking about tonight. And so, we're trying to get a different sense this evening that is, so, there were seven people who were present at the Capitol Subcommittee. There was a sense that was received at Capitol Subcommittee. So I think that we just need to be careful about what this report, where this report is coming from. If there's a report, having a, so, and also, Select Board is just having a hearing on the 17th, they're not having a discussion and a vote on it. So there's still time for us to have an appropriate and legal discussion and vote on this and then get that to the Select Board before they have a discussion and vote.
So when is their discussion and vote?
They haven't docketed that, as far as I know. They've docketed, it sounds like, and I just am hearing this tonight for the first time, that they've docketed their hearing on Driscoll 4 warrant article for the 17th. So that is a different, and we, again, Ms. Fetterfield and myself can talk with the Select Board about when it is that they're docketing a discussion on that. But I think that there is time for us to, within open meeting law, for us to have that discussion and vote so that then we can provide the appropriate report to the Select Board before they make their decision. So, that's where we're, we're at. I think from, that there, I think, so we have a good sense of where we are for our sense of urgency and our sense of wanting to move forward with this and to have it docketed for our next meeting, for a discussion. Previously, at our workshop, as we were talking about this, we had decided that we, so, that's, that's where we're at. So we will find a time, we will send out an email to get availability, and we will go from there to move this in, into haste. And Ms. Fetterfield and I understand that the, the fewer nights that we are able to do this in, the better, within time constraints. So we will take all of that and move, move forward, move forward. That brings us to our, where are we at now? Family and staff survey, although I, I do want to mention that we have to have our discussion about the executive session for the open meeting law complaint, speaking of open meeting law complaints, because if we do not have that this evening, then we will not be able to respond within the time that we are required to respond to it. So we do need to hold time for that as well.
With all due respect, do we have time to really do a good presentation of the, of the family and staff feedback, or is that gonna be a truncate? No, you have to put on your-
Two major parts to the presentation. One is the qualit, quantitative, and one is the qualitative. So, you know, we could give half of that tonight. You have the information, you have, you have the, you know, shared with earlier, earlier this week. So, so that's one way to, you know, begin it and get partway through it in the time allotted and then come back, there are dates to the qualitative. It's, I mean, it's, I'm just suggesting, it's up to, up to the committee to decide.
I feel bad, I know Ms. Cooley's here and was ready to present. On the other hand, you've done a lot of hard work on this and to truncate it, and-
I think we're going, I think, though, that we are going to have a very full next meeting and so that it makes sense to have a dis, a presentation and discussion on half of it tonight, because I think Capitol will consume much of our next meeting. And we're, we're trying not to have Capitol consume all of the meetings so we can have other discussions, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to clarify, are we dividing this into two separate presentations or are we reducing this 90-minute presentation to how long exactly?
Two separate presentations, correct, Mr. Lemus? That's your-
Yes.
So this will be-
It's your decision.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
So will this be the first 15 minutes of a 90-minute presentation? How are we breaking this out in terms of time? Can I have a clock? Okay.
I'm just doing the first slide, then you go in. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so folks, tonight will, so what we have tonight is a presentation of the family and staff feedback survey results from 2018-19 school year. These were administered in the, in winter of 2019. Tonight, we'll talk about just the overview of the surveys and get you sort of back up to speed on, on how we do them and why we do them. And then we'll cover the, uh, number two here as well, the quantitative results. So Erin Cooley, who is our Director of Data Analysis and Information Management, will lead you through the first part of the presentation.
Okay. All right, thanks, everyone, for having me today. I'm sorry we're, must split this into two parts, but you do have all the information from both parts, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about either before I come and present the second piece to you. As you all know, we use our surveys, that's family surveys and staff surveys, to gather feedback from our most important stakeholder groups in our district. We reflect at the school and system level on our areas of strength and areas for improvement. That's a little bit about what we'll talk about today. Schools can use these results when developing their school improvement plans for the upcoming years and also to set priorities for work with staff and families in the year ahead. As you are all familiar with, we have two or really three, I guess, different survey types that we administered last year and in previous years. So we have surveys for school-based staff that include teachers, school-based employees, paraprofessionals, secretaries, et cetera. We also have a survey for district staff, principals, vice principals, senior leadership, district staff that work here, web surplus, and the SEC, and then our survey for families. Similar to previous years, we've contracted with Panorama Education to help administer our surveys. It's an online survey. All responses are anonymous and translations are available for families who request them. And as interim Superintendent Lemus said, it was available this past school year in a three-week window in the winter of 2019, around January through mid-February. Again, similar to previous years, how we score these responses, or really how Panorama scores them, or how they recommend, based on their research that they're scored. Each survey item is linked into a different topic area. They should all look pretty familiar to you based on last year. The school staff survey has nine different topic areas, the district staff survey has two, and then the family survey, depending on the grade span, has between five and six topic areas or categories. Results are shared by their topic area and then also by item, so individual question within that particular topic area. And the results are reported by what we call percent favorable. So it indicates the percentage of respondents who answered positively to a question. So on that scale of one through five, any answer choice in that four or five would be considered favorable. So the example that you have below, you can see the answer choices highlighted in blue, quite or extremely strong are those which we would deem favorable for this particular item. So principals share their survey results in a couple of different ways, and I think this slide is important to recognize the top first, that the superintendent first shares the results with principals in late spring, so that's not only their aggregate results that you are probably most familiar with, but also their open response results that we will talk about at another time. They meet with the superintendent to review both of these results and essentially are given the flexibility to determine how they're gonna share this with their school communities. So that flexibility is in process, you know, how they're gonna present this information, whether it be similar to how I'm doing today or at a staff meeting or school site council, et cetera, and a deadline for that, so they can do that before the end of the school year. They can do that at the beginning of the school year, maybe in August, during the first two or so days that they have with staff, or in the fall as well. So the bottom half of this slides talks about how most of our school leaders are, or the timeline that most of them are following. So again, they're sharing their results with school staff in late spring, starting to identify goals and determine what they want to work on for the, you know, upcoming school year. They'll do this again in the early fall, perhaps before school opens or one of their early faculty meetings to frame the year ahead. And then they'll also share their results in the fall with their school council as part of the work that goes into creating their school improvement plan. Yes?
Okay, so I'm just gonna give you a quick example of how one school, Close Corner, used the results this year. So in the, sort of, late school year, I believe it was late May, early June, Principal Buller reviewed the results with school leaders and then they prepared presentations and shared the data with, with both staff and parents. And they had two different meetings of parents, a different time of the day, in different weeks. They held discussions during this, during these meetings with staff and parents and also answered questions for them about the data and about the results. And then, Principal Buller, throughout the spring, during school, and then during the summer, during the summer break, had listening sessions for staff and families to follow up on both the, the survey data, but also as part of the sort of planning process for identifying priorities this year. So she, she was using both the survey data and more input from these listening sessions to identify what has become their two priorities for the year, community building and identifying clearer procedures and practices. And that's for the whole school community, both, you know, among the parent and student body and also staff as well.
Okay, so we put this slide here just to show you how we, as a district, have released the results in prior years. We're a little bit delayed this year, just given some of our timelines, but in the spring, again, principals will receive their aggregate results and their open response results. In the early fall, again, they share- In the early fall, again, they share those results with staff and other, with parents and families at the school, their school council, again, to assist with planning for the new year. The results are presented to you all, either in the spring, summer, or in this case, at the beginning of the school year. And then, all of the quantitative results, meaning those reports that you're used to seeing, multiple choice responses to the different items are posted on the district website. Just so you all know, that's, those results are posted on the website as of today, and we've also included the results from 2018 and 2017 on the website. So, there's three years' worth of staff and family results by the district and by school on our public website on the reports page. All right, so just quickly going through our response rates for the spring of 2019. I split this up into staff, so whether that's school-based staff, or our central administration, and families. You can see on the column, the fourth column down, our response rate for the year for staff is 73%. I've highlighted that school-based range in there for you, so you can see some schools are at the lower end of that 73, some schools are higher than that 73% in terms of the response rates for staff. And that's a change of 11 percentage points from 2018. So, we're getting more folks to respond to the survey this year than in previous years. Same thing with families, a response rate of 25%. You see that school-based range there, again, 17 to 42, so some schools are lower, some schools are higher than that range, and that's an increase of five percentage points from 2018. Just to note, the response rates for both of the surveys are high enough to deem the results valid, right? So, we have enough folks responding that we can say this is how our community, whether it be staff or families, is feeling about the questions we're asking. And then, as I've noted, both of the rates for the staff and the family survey increased compared to the 2018 administration. So, this should look a little bit similar to you. As in previous years, this is our school staff, so those folks that are teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, et cetera, at the school, and how they're responding by the different topic areas in the school staff survey. So, what I've done for you here is each of the columns, the first column identifies the different categories or topic areas that folks are responding to. And then, the columns to the right show the percent favorable by school grade span. So, you have your beep, school-based staff, your K-8 school-based staff, and your high school, school-based staff. Anything in those first three columns highlighted in green are going to represent the highest percent favorable, or the highest topic area for that particular grade span. So, for K-8 in the high school, that's educating all students, and for beep, that's teaching FSC. Anything highlighted in red in those first columns are going to be the lowest percent favorable for the topic area. And you see for the beep and for the high school, that's professional learning. And then for K-8s, that's the topic of feedback. And, you know, you've seen these results over time. These are the same two topic areas that we, in the bottom, sort of have talked about the last couple of years. And we'll go into a little bit more detail later on in the presentation, and what we're doing for those things. If you keep going to the right, you just see the change. Again, this is for staff survey, so the change from 2018. Those highlighted in green are just the highest percent change in the different topic areas by the school grade span. So, you see some increases of 14% in beep, in the staff leadership relationship category. You see in the feedback category at the high school, an increase of nine percentage points who are responding favorably to those items there. So, that highlights the change for you from 2018 to 2019, again, on the staff survey. For district staff, again, those are folks who work in a central office position, also includes principals, vice principals at the school level. They're answering questions about this, the district. Percent favorable for district engagement topic area, those are questions based on relationships with colleagues, relationships with their supervisor, professional development. You see the percent favorable there at 68%, which is a change in, a positive change, in eight percentage points from 2018. And then the second topic area there being district climate, which are questions based on experiences that staff have with district leaders and their overall working environment. 52% favorable, which is a 13% change in the positive direction from 2018 for this particular group of staff. So, moving on to the family survey, again, these are the quantitative results, so the percent favorable on the different multiple choice items. To the left are going to be your topic areas, and same as the staff slide, this is kind of oriented the same way. Highlighted in green are going to be some high percent favorables for the different grade spans, and highlighted in red are going to be the lower percent favorable for those grade spans. And to the far right is going to be your percent change from 2018. And I think one thing that you see differently here compared to the staff survey is the change from 2018 to 2019 is very minimal in the staff survey, regardless of the grade span, as compared to the family survey. So, we'll talk about that a little bit too further on in the presentation. I just wanted to note that for you here. Okay, so we're going to do this a little bit differently than we've done in the past. Here are the three kind of areas that we're going to dig deeper into for the staff survey results. So, we're going to follow up on some of the challenges we had based on our spring 2018 data and the district staff results. We're going to respond to feedback, or talk about responding to feedback and strengthening practice. It's really in the professional learning topic area of the survey, and then we'll go through where we still need to do some work. So, just a reminder, district staff is based on 108 responses from this year, and it includes that group of employees. As a reminder, in the spring of 2018, the percent favorable for that district climate, so how district staff are feeling about climate here in Brookline, you see that 39%, which obviously we've highlighted before as pretty low, and it also was a dip from 2017 to 2018. So, that's just a quick refresh from two springs ago. And here's where we landed in the spring of 2019. So, we're at 52% favorable. You see the sampling of questions down there below the chart, and that's an increase of 13 percentage points from 2019. So, folks are feeling that district leaders are providing more support to them, they trust district leaders more, and the communication that district leaders have to them obviously is, I guess, better and more frequent and more informative than 2018. So, just to talk about that a little bit more, here's a sample question. So, to what extent do you trust district leaders to do what they say they will do? You see the results from the last three school years. That real big dip in 2018 brought us to 30% favorable on that particular item. And in spring 2019, we were able to kind of bump up back to around where we were in 2017. So, a big change in how folks are responding, or how folks feel about the trust in district The second thing we were focusing on was communication. So, the question, how successful are district leaders in communicating important information to staff? 25% favorable in 2018 compared to 37% favorable in 2019. Obviously, we want that 37 to be a little bit higher, but we are seeing that 12 percentage point increase from last year to what I'll say is this year, in air quotes. You can see where the change is happening, right? We're moving folks from that orange down to that green in this particular area. And I think one of the things that we've been thinking about too is how you really move that third, what I'll call a three on that one-to-five scale, to the fours and to the fives. And you'll see that represented throughout some of the other data points that we'll pull to. And then finally, for district staff, the last question that we wanted to highlight, how helpful are district leaders in providing support you need to do your job well? So, on the top of the slide, that's going to be every staff member who responded. So, you see that 52% favorable, which is an increase of 16 percentage points from 2018. What we wanted to highlight for you on the bottom half of the slide is how school leaders, principals, and vice principals in particular responded to this question. So, you see 2018, 19% of principals and vice principals are responding favorably to that particular item, how helpful are district leaders in providing support you need. And in 2019, that percentage jumps up to 57%, which is a 38% change from 18 to 19, to how principals are feeling, principals and vice principals, excuse me, about the support of district leaders. I don't know if interim Superintendent Lemus wants to say something about that. Or has it been missed? No, sorry. Yeah, this is you.
Thank you, Erin. So, just continuing on, so we're going to look at professional learning. As Erin said earlier, this has been a, for all four years, we've surveyed staff. It's been quite low. You'll see here, except for beep, who have quite a bit of time for professional learning and have been quite well organized and thoughtful about it, K-8s, they just have had much greater challenges over the years on really providing professional learning that our staff have found very useful. So, we're just focusing on that one category there. So, some of the questions that you see in this area at this school, to what extent are your ideas and suggested, suggestions for improvement encouraged? How valuable are the professional development opportunities that are organized by the school, or similarly, that are organized by the district staff? How often do professional development opportunities help you explore new ideas? So, those are some of the questions, those are the questions we're asking in this area. So, as I said earlier, didn't hear the numbers to back it up, this has been consistently low over the past four years. And so, what we're trying to do to strengthen, so I'm going to share with you some of the efforts we're making to strengthen professional learning. I want to first just share with you some of the, and this is sort of district-wide professional learning, and the approaches that have been used over the past number of years, just to sort of tell you where we've come from for it, tell you where we're going to. So, prior to 2016-17, there were release days for K-8 teachers, and those, the number of release days that any given teacher had, these are classroom teachers, varied from four to some, a number of folks had more than 12. That was quite inequally distributed for a number of different reasons. And these included four, these are typically four curriculum days, which were divided by each of the four primary academic subject coordinators. So, say, for a third-grade teacher, perhaps, that teacher would be out with other third-grade teachers four times during the year. Of those four days, half of those days, half a day, we spent working with the English, language arts coordinator, another half would be math coordinator, another half would be the social studies coordinator, and another half would be the science coordinator. That led to a variety of things, including one, those coordinators would really spend a lot of time, those, that, those three hours they had would be very high energy and a lot of material for teachers very quickly. Multiplying that four, it can really add up, especially over the years, if you're doing that every year. So, then, after that, we started to shift the approach, and it started to change year by year. So, in 2016-17, principals managed the professional development and release days, and the literacy collaborative continued, which is part of the earlier work as well. In 2017-18, principals and coordinators collaborated in some schools, principals managed release days in others, and literacy collaborative continued, sort of more of a hybrid. Sort of 2016-17 was a reaction earlier with principals taking over. 2017-18 was sort of a hybrid between principals and coordinators. And then last year, coordinators organized release day, professional development, and literacy collaborative continued. So, some of those challenges, you know, on that back and forth was focus and structure have been changing year to year. It was difficult to create a progression where teachers, principals, and schools knew what to expect year to year because it shifted. And that it was also, has been rare to see something that was new seen all the way to completion. And that, we, our belief has, you know, led to some of the results we got in terms of the feedback from staff. So, this year, we've put together a better approach for professional learning. So, principal, through the second part of last year, principals, coordinators, officers of teaching, teaching learning, and senior leadership worked together to create a better approach. It was based on input from staff at the building level, and also from the staff surveys. The aim is really to balance school autonomy and district-wide coherence. We need to, we realize we can't do it all. Part of the sort of impetus to create a more organized approach was that we knew that between school efforts and district priorities, that there was just too much being piled on, and so we realized we had to organize it thoughtfully in a way so people wouldn't be overwhelmed. We wanted to allow schools to continue what there had already started, and that's how you saw some things like I described earlier, the work on anxiety, trauma-based responding to students who had suffered trauma that Lawrence had been working on and now is continuing. But we also wanted to make sure that some of the district-wide priorities that had been developed over the past few years, cultural proficiency, restorative practices, were done in a more coherent and planful way. So, this year, in the district-wide professional development, these release days we've had for many years, we're focusing on three areas, cultural proficiency, restorative justice, and then K-8 math professional development. So, every teacher's getting four release days, and this is primarily focused on K-8. It'll be a three-year process, so they'll all do similar work in cultural proficiency, restorative justices, restorative justice, sorry. And then, the K-5 math teachers will also be working on professional development, as well as the sixth to eighth, as they develop and roll out the new curriculum. I mentioned the whole annual plan. We're limiting the number of release days for all teachers down to just four, four for the year, because we'd heard many teachers sort of frustrated that they're being pulled out of classes so much, as I said, you know, some in double digits every year. And then, we're also including, having a plan like this allows us to include special education teachers, guidance counselors, VPs, ETFs, and others who are often left out of a lot of that support and work. And this will allow them to have similar, work on the similar topics. So, as a grade-level team, or as a school, they're, you know, moving forward with some of the same information and same training. So, we're just beginning that process, and are pretty excited about how it's going to, we hope it'll be a better approach, because schools will have some consistent support and training across the district while still allowing for individual efforts at the school level.
So, where do we need to continue to make progress? Again, we're talking about the staff survey, and we're going to highlight two particular areas in the school leadership topic. So, here's our percent favorable over the last four years from school staff for the school leadership topic. You see we're pretty stagnant in around the 52 to 54-ish range. Here are those questions, or a sampling of those questions that are part of that topic area. So, how clearly school leaders communicate and reinforce their goals? How effectively do they communicate important information to staff? How positive is the culture of the school? And when the school makes important decisions, how much input do staff members have? You can see the percent favorable there for 2019, and also the changes, which are all in the positive direction from the 2018 survey. We're going to highlight two pieces around communication and decision-making here. So, the first one being the question, when the school makes important decisions, how much input do staff members have? So, again, even though we have an increase from 2018, we still see only 39% of school staff responding favorably to that particular item. I talked about this a little bit before, looking at the orange versus the green. So, again, the orange are those answer choices that we would deem not favorable. And you can see that 20% of staff are responding in those bottom two, or those answer choices that we would consider one to two points. And we have 376 staff members right in the middle there. So, I think talking about like how we can get those folks down to those fours and fives, what we need to do, or what school leaders need to do, what we have, what school leaders need help from us doing. need to do, what we have, what school leaders need help from us doing in order to move the needle a little bit there. Similar, the question around communication. So how effectively do school leaders communicate important information to staff? 59% responding favorably there, which is a six percentage point increase from 2018. But again, you see the number right there in the middle, 265, which is a big chunk of staff. And so thinking about what we can do, what we can help school leaders do to communicate more effectively is something that we should be discussing based upon these results.
So one effort we are hoping to, we've been working on and hoping to get underway are school-based leadership teams. So, and these, if they go into effect, would really help on both areas. So collaborative leadership and decision-making, I'll start with that one. So the idea of a school-based leadership team is that the team of staff members include the principal and vice principal. It represents many perspectives on a school staff, so it could be 10 to 12 people, that sort of thing. But they represent different grades, different, you know, support areas, specialists, that sort of thing. This team would be tasked with collaborating on decisions that impact the entire school. Those could relate to instructional decisions typically, but not always. They'd be deciding on what to work on based on staff input and could be the surveys, for example, could be other staff input, that sort of thing. One of the real values of this is that at this point in our schools, there's no, there are very few processes or systems or structures for really having appropriate involvement of staff in leadership and decision-making. And so what typically happens, like it happens in many schools, is you have principals in their time speaking to individual teams, perhaps, or individual teachers, and they do their best they can to get input in a sort of informal way. So some teachers are heard, but others may not be. Or other teachers who weren't heard aren't aware that other teachers were consulted and that sort of thing. So it's just, there is this lack of difficulty, both getting input, but also making sure folks know that teachers are being consulted and being involved in decision-making. So a collaborative, a school-based leadership team like this could help with that significantly. A school-based leadership team also helps with communication because you have channels between representatives of the faculty who are, you know, working on, working on these issues, are part of this team, and they are able to talk to their teams, talk to folks, their colleagues, get important input on important issues that the leadership team is dealing with. And then that's a two-way street, helping to communicate any decisions that are happening as well as getting input. So that's something that we would, we are hoping to implement and continue, will continue to work on. But we see it as one way to really develop some, you know, consistent systems or structures or processes where teachers can be involved in decision-making, leadership in the schools, but also would really improve communication as well.
Mr. Lemus?
So I see that before we go into the section, I see you're about halfway through the presentation, and this seems like it might be a good place to take a break for today and then see if there are questions from the committee. Maybe if we took five minutes for questions from the committee on this portion of the presentation, and then we can continue and have the rest of this conversation at our next meeting?
Yes.
Is there going to be a presentation on qualitative data on the staff, if we have that as well? Or should we, should we talk to the district?
I was just asking, since there's probably going to be a presentation on the qualitative data associated with this reporting population, maybe we should save the discussion for when we've heard that as well?
What do you, what do you think about that?
That's a great question.
Ms. Mascada?
I think so. Yes. You have one? Yes, Mascada?
I'm thinking about the professional development section. And I'm also thinking about teachers, knowing teachers across town at their grade level. How is the professional development done in such a way that teachers across town have time over the course of the year to get together frequently with other teachers at their grade level?
So it's depending which area you're working on. So for example, example, cultural proficiency is being done in a way where it's grade-level teams working with other grade-level teams. So third, I think I have this right. I might have, I might be using restorative justice example and saying cultural proficiency. So we're doing it in two different ways. One where third grader, third graders will get together with third grade teachers, okay, and work on a topic of cultural proficiency. In math, for example, the math department, Kathleen Hubbard and her work, she, they're doing something, developing mathematical ideas. That's the precursor, that's developing conceptual understanding of mathematics in three, fourth, and fifth grades. And she has asked for cross-collaboration. So where you would be doing that work with your third grade team, you also might, from your school, you also might be with a fourth or a fifth grade team from other school. So there's collaboration across schools. In that example, it's different grades. There also might be another third grade in there. For other, some on cultural proficiency or restorative justice, you'd be with your own grade. So really a combination of both of those.
The reason I'm asking is that one of the things that I think is problematic is that we have a very large school system now. And it seems to me, for people to gain confidence in their teaching, part of it is, what do you learn from other teachers? I can say years and years ago, because that's when I taught, we knew teachers all across town and we knew them well. So I might know the sixth grade teacher at Baker, and these were , well, we were not doing Baker, the sixth grade wasn't taught the same way, so I'll say fifth grade. You knew, you knew teachers all across town, and you knew what they were interested in. So there was a lot of cross-pollination from school to school, just because teachers knew one another well and knew the kinds of work they were doing. And it seems to me, as the school system gets bigger, that's harder to maintain. And when you do a variety of different things, and I'm not saying you shouldn't do that, but when you do a variety of different things, like grade-level meetings versus meetings in the school where they're grade-level teams, you also need to think about how you make the staff work together well. One of the things that came out, and this isn't professional development so much, but it can apply to it, when we went certainly to devotion school, which had not been, I'm sorry, Coolidge Corner School, there were people, the teacher said, "We don't even know the people in the building." And that's so unsettling for a staff, to be working in a building or a system where they don't have connections with other people doing the same kinds of jobs or, you know, within the school, working with kids. And I think it's, I think the professional development programs are one way that you can make those connections and do it deliberately and thoughtfully so people will build the kinds of connections they need.
It may not be communicating it well, but that's our, that's our intention. We agree with you entirely, Mascado. And I think two things. One, you mentioned about the Coolidge Corner, she's not feeling connected to other teachers in their building. And that's one of the, absolutely one of the reasons that Principal Waller and her, and the school are talking community building this year. That's within staff and also with families. And so that's very important, and I think you really touched on something very important. The other piece I'll use is the kindergarten teachers as an example. They expressed to us very, very clearly last Friday, how they, and before that, rather, in their communication at the end of last year in the summer, how important it was for kindergarten teachers to work together over the course of this year. We had planned to do that with them, but focusing on cultural proficiency. We changed that and we're focusing on literacy and play-based learning and instruction, but with them as a unit, all working together for the exact reasons you say. So absolutely important, really essential. Thank you.
Dr. Spielman and Dr. Lemus?
So thank you for all this information. There's a lot there, so I've not, I haven't been able to go through it all yet. I will just say kind of something to Mascado's effect about, teachers learn from each other. And so the thing that's missing on the paper anyway, under strengthening professional learning, is I just don't see the teacher voice there at all. You know, how are, how are they participating in the decisions around professional learning? Are they actually running some of the sessions? So it's been very effective in many systems and districts to have teachers take on the role of teaching when they're willing to do that, to take on that professional development. And so they may or may not want to do that. I mean, you don't want to force them. But on that, on number 26, I'm really missing just the teacher's voice in that. And so I want to think more about that and what that should look like. But I feel like that's an important piece.
Yeah. So what you, what you can't see and not hear is that in those sessions themselves, it'll be very much our teacher voice, sharing practices, sharing reactions, learning together. And also, I completely agree with you in terms of, you know, the value of having teachers being in those teaching roles with their colleagues. We're not asking teachers to step up in that way this year, but certainly open to that. You know, it's a, you know, I've been talking to Debbie Gittens about, you know, in her work in the past, we thought of experts in the schools. But experts is something, isn't experts as we think of it, you know, officially. But if there's something you felt confident and strong about that you were teaching, then you are an expert in that. And they can share that with your colleagues. So completely agree with that approach. You don't see on that paper, but it's, we are getting input on, across the years, on the value of these topics. And then we'll certainly have teacher voice and involvement and input as they work together.
I just want to add, as far as the developing mathematical ideas, training, that was something that came up loud and clear as coaches and math specialists were working with teachers about building their strength. So it might not be part of the planning, but it's been a request, and that's how we ended up with that and worked with BEF to get a grant to train a cohort of people outside of school. And then like, let's make this happen for all of the teachers. And it's also something that is important for instructional practice as far as what we expect and how it will support and build, allow us to build the new curriculum on that, that training. The other piece is the cultural proficiency training that we are disseminating across the district over the next several years has come out of direct, the goals that the district has, direct communication, feedback that we get consistently on family and community surveys that say like, I don't, I don't necessarily know how to address the needs of students who are different than me. I don't necessarily, as a family member, I don't feel like my child's needs are met. And so whether or not that was a specific request from teachers to have that kind of training, it is a need that has been, that has arisen and something that we should address as a district. And so I definitely, we know the need, the importance of making sure that teacher voice is in there, but there's also a balance of like, what is it that we need to address as a district? And so we are making that happen in this process.
Can you go to slide 24, please? Okay. I see that in your slides, you've identified professional development and you, professional learning, and you have a very extensive set of recommendations and plans for trying to address it. I'm concerned about the line below professional learning, specifically feedback. You have listed next to here that the first, this first question, I have a couple, it's related. But at this school, to what extent are your ideas and suggestions for improvement encouraged? Is that part of professional learning? Is that, or is that part of?
Feedback is more the question, I don't know if you have a question, but it's more on the evaluation process. Are you getting feedback from your supervisor or coaches on improving your practice? So it's more both informal feedback and evaluation is what the question's focused on.
So what is going on with the fact that 23% of K-8 teachers are not finding their feedback satisfactory?
So just sort of informally, my impressions are that are, do you want to? Yes. Thank you. Is, folks aren't finding the evaluation process effective, and supervisors are finding it difficult to do it really well. It's an area we need to improve, both in what feedback is given and how it's given. And then also, is it concrete enough to support educators on their goals and to strengthen their practice in a way they find useful? So it's, we don't, you know, we've said every year, this is also a challenge, and it's something else we need to focus on. It's difficult to do it all at the same time.
Can I follow up? What do you think are the implications for teacher morale? I know that professional development is really going to help with building a culture of community learning among teachers and that that's going to help a bit. But I'm sorry to jump ahead, teacher morale came out a lot in the qualitative feedback. But there isn't necessarily in, I'm not really sure about the connection between evaluation and teacher morale. Do you have a sense of that?
Do I? I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Well, I'm talking about the feedback piece. I mean, basically, we did sort of a, I apologize.
We did sort of a deep dive on professional learning, but arguably, you know, the 23% score on feedback has a very direct implication for teachers' levels of job and professional satisfaction in their ordinary work. You know, are they receiving feedback? Is it, you know, I would just like to know more about it. Yeah.
I would actually say, I would actually broaden that. I mean, I think, you know, your teaching efficacy, can you do your job, do you feel like you can do your job successfully? School climate, you know, are you, are you involved in terms of school leadership? Are you involved in decision-making? Are you, are you being communicated well about, you know, news, changes, what's going on in your school? Certainly feedback in terms of whether it's informal feedback or part of the evaluation process. I'd say all of these have significant impact on morale, and that's why we care about them. So I just, I'm hesitant to say that one of these has, and I couldn't actually say if one of these has more impact on morale than others. I think also in some ways, that's an individual, you know, that can change individual to individuals. So I totally appreciate your concern about teacher morale. I think we're all very concerned about all employee morale. But I'd say that, you know, all of these can affect that.
We're going to stop the conversation. We are having a continuation of this presentation and discussion, and so we can have further comments and questions at that point in time. But we do have a couple of things that are time-sensitive for this evening. And so thank you, Ms. Cooley, especially for putting, and Mr. Lemus, for putting so much time into the presentation. And we look forward to the continued presentation. Before we move into the executive session to, I did just want to circle back on another part of the discussion about our public hearing and the town meeting warrant articles, because I'd like to make a request. So you've talked about the Driscoll for Warrenge article. There's also a Warrenge article related to the Coolidge Corner School renaming. And I, Mr. Pearlman, you are the liaison with the renaming committee. And so I know that there were some dates that have been discussed about for a hearing for that as well. Could you give us a very brief update on that?
So last night, we had our first meeting on the naming committee, and we're looking at three possible dates. We would like to have the meeting held at the Coolidge Corner School. We were looking at Wednesday, October 23rd, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. as a first choice. A second choice was Wednesday, October 16th, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And the last choice was October 7th, which is a Monday, also from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And we're hoping we could get that scheduled as soon as possible so that we can raise awareness in the community, encourage very high attendance, have a significant public comment opportunity. So all of that was discussed.
Okay. And then the other, just as we had a very brief discussion about this in Donket preview, the other warrant article that we identified as having a relationship to the schools is with respect to the Oak Street, the sale of the Oak Street properties. And so I think that that would be, those are the three, the Driscoll, Coolidge Corner School, and Oak Street that were just on first glance identified as ones that the school might want to have public hearing and discussion on.
There are three related to Coolidge Corner School renaming.
Yes, that's correct. Although, is the renaming committee having a hearing on all three of those at the same time?
Yes, it'll be all three.
All three at the same time? And you had a comment?
Yes. So it's the naming committee, it's not renaming committee, that on Coolidge Corner. On, with regards to Oak Street, I was planning on having that on our schedule for October 2nd for the capital subcommittee. I'd hoped we would have gotten to it at our last meeting, but it didn't happen. So I plan to have a discussion about it at our October 2nd meeting. And I'm, I
So I plan to have a discussion about it at our October 2nd meeting, and I'm, I think we, I guess we do our own hearing. I guess we have to do it too?
Well, I was wondering, as we had, as we had the conversation earlier about combining, or potentially trying to combine some of these hearings with other boards and bodies that are also having hearings, so not asking people to come out to give their thoughts on the Coolidge Corner renaming, and, you know, trying to get real vibrant feedback. So I wonder if the committee is not interested in trying to schedule, to see if there is interest in us being welcome to join at that time. But perhaps Ms. Coin could also be pulling the committee for our availability on those prospective dates, and that Ms. Fetterspiel and I can liaison with the select board to find out if we can hold a joint hearing on the Oak Street sale as well, so that we can consolidate and have some efficiencies across town on these things. Well, I think, do we, there is also, yeah, oh, well. Does anyone know the answer until when we need to have a hearing in order to be able to have a report? Is that how it goes? Or we have a hearing because we like public comment?
We have a hearing because we love public comment. No, if we are going to take a vote in order, that says to town meeting, the school committee believes that you should vote favorable action, or no action, or whatever, on a warrant article, then we need to have a public hearing that informs our vote. So typically, you'll say, "We're having a public hearing on warrant article 4," and then we hear what the public has to say, and then we take a vote, and then we usually write a few sentences or paragraph. Sometimes we write it on the warrant article as written, and sometimes we just write our own thing. So for example, sometime, if we don't like all of the wording in the warrant article, we will just say, so Indigenous Peoples' Day is a good example, there was a lot of verbiage in there that a lot of people had issues with, so we just said, "The public schools of Brookline are going to," you know, "This is what we think." And then that's, that is what we wrote. So we actually didn't take a vote on the warrant article itself. We made a statement to town meeting about our thinking about the warrant article, so.
So we would need to have quorum then, yes. So we will work on that, on sending out dates for some of these hearings, to get availability, to see if we would be able to have quorum, so that we can have these and find the appropriate time to schedule them. The other part of this discussion is with respect to any, my understanding, one of the town meeting members might know offhand, how many warrant articles are there this go-round? A lot. Okay, so there are a lot. 36. And so the, the thought was that this might be inappropriate, it might be appropriate for our policy subcommittee to have a discussion about the remaining 32 of them, if he's not, that's okay, because, about the, any of the others that might be appropriate for the school committee to opine about. And so I'd like, 34. So I'd like to, 35. So I'd like to request at the next policy subcommittee meeting, if there can be a discussion about, if there are any others of the 35 warrant articles that you'd like to bring back to us on the 26th, for us to then consider having a hearing about into the future.
Ms. Coin, could you update the, for, do we have time to update the agenda for Monday? Thank you.
Okay, and then, so I would like to make a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose 1, to review and possibly take remedial action regarding an open meeting law complaint received on or about July 18th, 2019 pursuant to the exemption, to discuss complaints or charges brought against a public officer. Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Secretaries Association and the Brookline Educators Union, Unit A, Unit B, and Paraprofessionals, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And purpose 7, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meetings, June 19, July 9, July 18, July 22nd, and August 2019.
Point of order?
Yes.
Will not discussing the school budget development calendar, the school budget development guidelines, and priorities impede progress for the school budget development in any way? Okay.
Ms. Coin, if you could poll the committee?